Hey Karen, this is Chris Smith from IT. How are you doing?
I'm okay. Am I in or not?
You are in. I believe Mitch is going to join us shortly here. I was just on the phone with him.
Good evening, President Swartz.
Good evening, Vice Chancellor Mitch Bailey.
Mitch is fine, thank you.
We can't see each other?
We are live.
Am I doing some... Oh, here I am. I panic when it doesn't go exactly the right way.
So we are live.
Okay. What am I supposed to be doing now?
This would be the opening of the meeting and calling for comment on closed session items.
Okay. I don't know, I can't get my face on there, is that okay? We don't care. Who is talking?
So Mitch, the question I just wanted to confirm with you is, you know, just since this is the first time I'm helping to operate this, is that what time would you like me to kind of come back here, just kind of in preparation for the board meeting starting?
Five fifty please.
Okay, no problem. I'll be here. And then I'll just leave this open and running while you guys are in the closed session.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks Mitch.
So what do I do? Just call the meeting to order?
Call the meeting to order and call for public comment on the closed session items.
Do I have four participants, right? Oh, okay. Okay, I'm calling this meeting to order. Our board meeting of October 28th. And on our agenda is to ask for public comments on the closed session items. Do I have anybody who'd like to speak?
If you would like to speak, please raise your hand in the Zoom box and we will recognize you.
Here's the attendees. Okay, oh, Tom. Tom Rudy?
Looks like we have no comments from the public.
So there are no comments? Just an attendee, is that... Am I correct?
It appears to be correct.
So can I adjourn to closed session?
Yes ma'am.
Thank you. The board will now adjourn to closed session. During closed session, the board will, as per our agenda, hold a conference with agency labor negotiator as listed on the printed agenda. Two, consider public employee appointment or employment of positions listed on the printed agenda. Three, hold a conference with legal counsel regarding two cases of anticipated litigation as listed on the printed agenda. And four, consider ratification of confidential warrants. Hearing no public comments, I will now resetch to closed session. Thank you. And I am leaving this to go back. Bye.
I will join you in the other room.
And if you would like to speak, please raise your hand in the Zoom box and we will recognize you.
Here's the attendees. Okay, oh, Tom. Tom Rudy?
Looks like we have no comments from the public.
So there are no comments? Just an attendee, is that... Am I correct?
It appears to be correct.
So can I adjourn to closed session?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. The board will now adjourn to closed session. During closed session, the board will, as per our agenda, hold a conference with the agency labor negotiator as listed on the printed agenda. Two, consider public employee appointment or employment of positions listed on the printed agenda. Three, hold a conference with legal counsel regarding two cases of anticipated litigation as listed on the printed agenda. And four, consider ratification of confidential warrants. Hearing no public comments, I will now research to closed session. Thank you. And I am leaving this to go back. Bye.
I will join you in the other room.
Hello. Hi, this is different than usual.
Good evening, Trustee Mendel Kern.
Yes, I have no video.
Yeah, we're, Chris, can you enable video?
Yeah, let me see what's going on.
Okay, I see us now. We're live, is that correct?
We are live.
Okay, we're live.
Okay, it says I am unable to start video on my video camera. The host is disabled video.
Should be enabled now. Sorry about that.
Okay, thank you.
Ah, here we are.
Good to go.
Good to go. Thanks, Chris.
Hello. Hi, Dave.
Hello, Trustee Schwartz. Long time no see.
Long time no see. I didn't know where I was there for a few minutes. Glad to see some people I know.
Good evening, President Schwartz. Always a pleasure.
Oh, Jose, always. Not much longer.
And, and we are, just so all the participants know, we are live right now with all our guests as well. So I just wanted to...
See, we have 50 attendees.
Yes.
And 23 panelists.
Excellent.
See, Trustee Goodman has joined us. It looks like we're waiting for two more.
I see, I see Trustee Holliver. I do not see Trustee Goodman. Oh, there he is. And trusting, I see Kim Lopez. I see President Moore. I see President Marino. Erin McQueen. I've just named you all off. Oh, Jade, good evening, Jade. Where are you these days?
Still in the Bahamas.
Still in the, oh, the Bahamas. It's beautiful. Is it, how's the weather? Is it okay?
Yeah, it's pretty good. It's 8:00 PM at night here, so, well, it's 9:00 PM at night now, so it's not so hot anymore.
Joy. Okay. I don't know, can I start? Should I start or what?
I think so. If we're all here, yes, absolutely.
Trustee Nourish?
Trustee Nourish. Look at, where's Trustee Nourish? Is he here?
I think we're still waiting for him.
Okay. There's Trustee Goodman. Kathy Blackwood. Oh, my goodness. Hi. Have the same hair. I can say the same thing about Vice Chancellor Bauer. We have the same hair. So mine's white, not blonde. Okay, let me know if you see him, because my screen's hopping all over the place here. He said he might have trouble getting in. Um, Chancellor, are you helping? Chancellor, are you helping? Trustee Norris, by chance?
Sorry, President. Yes, I was busy helping. Trustee, I've just texted him to see if he found our link. Okay.
It seems like every time we do this, it's different.
Yeah, they keep, I think there's. Okay, Mitch, can you send Trustee Norris an email with the link to the panelists? He seems to have trouble finding it. Would that be okay?
Yeah, we can do it. Chancellor Claire, I just resent Trustee Norris the invite.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so maybe we'll go ahead and start since it's 6:15 and we're going to assume everything is going to go well from now on. Welcome to our board meeting of October the 28th. We are reconvening in open session. I would like to call the meeting to order and if we can have our flag, we will do our pledge of allegiance. If we don't have our, oh, there we go. Okay, well, beautiful. Okay, everybody, here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Oh, I see. Here comes Trustee Norris. We're all here. Just in time for a roll call vote. Vice Chancellor Bailey, if you please.
Certainly. President Schwartz?
Here.
Vice President Norris?
Here.
Trustee Goodman?
Here.
Trustee Holliver?
Here.
Trustee Mendel Kern?
Here.
Student Trustee Shanet?
Here.
Madam President, also the attendance are Chancellor Claire, College of, sorry, the Kenyatta College President Moore, Skyline College President Marino, College of San Mateo interim President Lopez, Chief Financial Officer Slater, and District Academic Senate President Wallace.
Thank you. Staff has asked that the board consider adjourning tonight's meeting in the memory of two district employees who recently have passed away. Kathleen Feinblum, an English professor from Skyline College, and David McCarger, a utility engineer based at Skyline College. Of the Board would agree, we would like to adjourn this meeting in their memories, and I hope that we will send their family something on their behalf. Thank you.
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Let's see if I can find all you guys. One, two, three, one. There were no, there's no, there are no actions taken in closed session, so we will go to the discussion of the order of the agenda. Again, staff has asked that the information report 20-10-3C be moved up on the agenda to be presented immediately prior to item 2010-103B. Members of the board is, are disagreeable?
Yes.
Three, four, five. Yes, thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd also like to ask that we move item 20-10-103B, the approval of the contract award for Kenyatta College Building 22 Swing Space Project, if we could move that to immediately before the item 2010-103B as well.
Oh, okay, before the discussion, okay, wait. Let me write this down. Very good. Any objections from other board members? Any other items that we'd like to correct on the agenda or change? Not correct. Okay, if Chancellor Claire, we're now to statements from executives and student representatives. I will turn this over to the Chancellor to provide the executive report.
Thank you so much, President Schwartz, and good evening, members of the board and members online and the public. I actually have two quick items. First of all, although you took action on this at the last study session, I do want to formally congratulate our new Chief Technology Officer, Domin Gruall. Domin has just done a terrific job in his role as, as a, as a contract employee with Strata Information Group. And Domin, it's just really nice to formally welcome you to the team. It was a very competitive pool, but Domin really was the, the candidate that rose to the top for, for the committee as well as the executive staff. So congratulations, Domin, and continued doing the great work that you're doing. Secondly, and I believe, I know I updated you this, with this in a weekly update, but I also want to formally congratulate Vice Chancellor Jose Nunez, who is when the Community College Facilities Coalition is at the proper CCFC. Jose, is that right? Okay, I got my acronym correct. But he won the 2020 Paul Holmes Facility Leadership Achievement Award, and it's a, it's a, quite an honor. He was nominated and selected among his peers. And as I talked to Vice Chancellor Nunez, you know, it's nice to win an award, but it's especially nice when it comes from those that you work with. So Jose, thank you not only for your excellent leadership in this district. Everything we've asked you to do runs well and runs right, and people just love you, but also for your statewide leadership. You've, you've made a difference both in the district and in, across the state. So congratulations.
Chancellor Claire, I really appreciate it. It's with deep humility that I, you know, accept this award from the California Community Colleges Facility Coalition. It really is an honor and I feel humbled by it. Thank you.
With that, I'll turn it over to the college presidents to see if they have anything significant to report beyond their own reports to the board.
Nothing from me. Thank you.
Okay, nothing from Dr. Marino, nothing from Dr.-
Nothing from me, Chancellor Claire.
Okay, all right. Next, I'll turn it over to Chief Financial Officer Slater. Do you have anything to report?
Nothing from me, Chancellor Claire.
Okay, I'm, I'm working my way down the virtual room here, and I think the next person would be academics, District Academic Senate President Jeremy Wallace.
No report.
Okay. I believe Vice Chancellor Bailey, do we have a student report this evening or not?
We do not.
Okay. Well, that concludes the statements from executives. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you. And it is brought to my attention that I did something wrong. Under announcements from closed session, I neglected to say we did. The board did consider on item four, ratification of confidential warrants. So that should be noted into the record, please. Maybe I'll get this job right. Yeah. Statements from other representatives and groups. This is not a time for negotiation. This is a time to tell us if there's anything going on in your organization that you'd like us to know about. And so I would call on anybody from AFT Local 1493, and I see a hand raised, Eric Brenner. He needs to be unmuted.
Okay, you hear me?
Yes, good.
Hi. My name is Eric Brenner, and I'm editor of AFT 1493's newsletter, The Advocate, and I'm here to raise a very important systemic inequity that has not been addressed in our district. While I sincerely commend the Chancellor and the board for your ongoing focus on structural racism against people of color and other marginalized groups, I want to talk for a minute about the inequities faced by the part-time faculty in our district, who are 70% of our faculty members. I'm sure our board members all feel they are well aware of this problem, since it is an issue that's been raised repeatedly over the years by our union and by many adjunct faculty who've been brave enough to speak up about the conditions they face. I'm not sure you realize, however, how much has been done in other districts around the state, and especially in the Bay Area, to begin to actually improve the conditions for their part-time faculty, and how little our district has done in comparison. I recently looked more closely at other district salary schedules and made a comparison chart of how much our part-timers are paid per course compared to our neighboring districts. Since I'm not able to present a slide in open comment, I emailed the chart to all the board members a short time ago. And the chart is also available in the latest issue of The Advocate at AFT1493.org. And the numbers made me shocked and embarrassed. Just to use step five as a comparison point, while a part-timer in our district makes $5,630 for teaching a three-unit class, a part-timer at the same step at Fodil Deanza makes $6,400. At City College of San Francisco, they make $6,815. At Mission West Valley, they make $6,865. And at College of Marin, they make $7,270 for a three-unit course. So a part-timer in our district is making between $770 and $1,600 less per each course than if they taught in one of our neighboring districts. Since the state mandated districts to begin to address the issue of part-time parity in 2001, almost 20 years ago, almost all the districts have defined pay parity for part-timers and moved their faculty compensation to a parity-based salary schedule. But our district is one of the only districts in the state that has failed to do so. As leaders of this district, which is admirably working to address many systemic inequities and continues to have a very healthy community-funded budget, I think we should all feel very alarmed about the shameful inequities our part-time faculty face. The fortunate thing is, our district has the resources to fundamentally improve those inequities. Thank you for your time and consideration of this critical issue.
Thank you, Mr. Brenner. Is there anybody here from CSEA Chapter 33 who would like to make any kind of announcement? Annette Perot, your hands raised?
Um, Annette Perot, we have nothing to comment on tonight. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Anybody from Ask Me AFL-CIO Local 829, Council 57? Hearing none. We will move to the next agenda item, which is statements from the public on non-agenda items. If there are any statements, you're allowed three minutes to speak. Members of the public who are participating by Zoom should use the raise hand function at the bottom of the right corner of the screen. Members will be called upon to speak. Frank Elliott, I see your hand raised.
Am I unmuted, President Schwartz?
Yes, you are.
Great. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for, for giving me a chance to talk. We have several people would like to talk to the RFP proposal, award of the proposal. I think I heard you say that that's being moved up in the, in the agenda. Would you prefer that we all hold our, our comments until we get to that point, or?
Yes, because that is an agenda item. So these, what we're doing now is non-agenda items. So if you want to speak on that agenda item, yes, if you could hold until that time, I will call upon you for a public guide, public comment.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other speakers on public non-agenda items? Sam? I don't want to chime, Tom? Sam, there you are. You need to be unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of supporters of SMAC. Would like to thank Tom Bauer, Diana Thomas, and everyone responsible for all their hard work in getting the age group and master swimmers back into the pool. We are happy with the progress and the anticipated increase in swim times starting November 1st. We understand that a great deal of effort has been afforded to that cause, and we are grateful. With that said, I would like to address some of the current issues that we have with EXOS management, and why we believe their current policies are not beneficial for SMAC and the community overall. Management style EXOS practices is a concept known as top-down management, as some of you may be familiar with. Your level managers create company-wide decisions, and that trickle down to lower departments. While this kind of structure is appropriate for a wellness center within corporate environments such as Google, is not particularly well-suited for running community resources or age group swim programs, since members at SMAC are not employees of the college. Suggestions from people outside of management are either ignored or explained away. As an example, requests for a parents' meeting to inform and to reassure those who are thinking of leaving the club has been ignored. Even inter-team meetings suggested by Pacific Swimming Team Representative was denied. The misleading answers are often used to placate anxious parents and members, resulting in a sense of distrust. As a result, most of the elite swimmers have already left the team and will not be coming back. Others are waiting for spots on other clubs to open, so they can leave as well. Boy satisfaction does not seem to be a concern for this current EXOS administration, as evidenced by the turnover of management and coaches. For reasons not attributed to COVID, just in these past two years, we have lost a good portion of our elite swimmers and our coach. Took seven years to build up the program, two years to make it completely irrelevant. Old Dogs Swim Team was once well on its way to become us, to becoming a significant presence in the Pacific Swimming region, offering training at a world-class facility, clearly making a name for itself while bringing recognition to the college. Some of our swimmers continue to swim for CSM College Team, and often, the swimmers on the CSM team have coached the age group swimmers. Disregard for input and feedback from its members have resigned the program to nothing more than a wrecked team wholly disconnected from the college. That is the quintessential problem with EXOS. SMAC is not a private club, but it's being run as if it were. We are members of a community often made to feel like assets or data points in an economic enterprise. We're not employees. We are taxpaying citizens who support this school and its community and deserve equal consideration. We believe that this current EXOS administration is not suitable for the management of our community asset. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, anybody else on non-agenda items? Diana Thomas? Unmuted, please.
I'm unmuted. Thank you. With all respect, members of the board, President Schwartz, I do believe that there was a report submitted by Tom Bauer that outlined the progress that was made with respect to the masters program and also to the youth swim team program, for which there has been excessive communication from the coaches to the parents that responded to the surveys. Unfortunately, a number of individuals on both of those teams have chosen not to come back because of COVID and other reasons. And the communication that we have sent to both of those entities has been a not-yet communication and a wait communication until we're able to successfully integrate increased number of swimmers per lane, which we will begin November 1st. The plan was blessed by Ben Zink and Mara and also by the Health Department. So we are respectfully entering into that new process November 1st. And as we learn and as the staff adapts to increasing the number of students, or I should say athletes per lane, then we are hoping to expand. In regards to access to the pools, up until November 1st, we were pretty much limited to one person per lane by the Health Department. We have expressed, Mr. Chang and others, that we will definitely have a parent meeting once we have learnings from those children and individuals in the water to see if that's a program we can continue to successfully expand. With respect to former employees and management roles that are no longer with us, we will not speak to their status, because that would compromise their privacy and the reasons why they are no longer with us. But suffice it to say that there are reasons for decisions that were made with respect to the program.
Thank you. Jennifer Jane?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. First of all, I'd like to thank the board for listening to the club tonight and previously at the meeting in August. We want to especially thank Board President Karen Schwartz and Chancellor Claire for bravely attending as- for bravely attending a Zoom parents meeting for our swim club. Your presence meant a lot. We also appreciate the work of the newly established SMAC Advisory Board who's helped make high impact improvements for our swim team in the recent months, despite some challenges with the current management. I'm a mom of three swimmers. When it comes to your child's swim team, of course, it's easy to become passionate about it as a parent. You've driven to practice sessions multiple times per day, five days per week, you've woken up with them at six AM, driven to them, driven them to Saturday and Sunday swim meets. You've sat with the same great group of families for entire weekends. You've watched your kids and their kids achieve a personal best time, or perhaps not. I think of our Bulldog Swim Club as a big family, and that is our main ask, that management start thinking about the kid's swim club more as a family, the team. Children should never be viewed as replaceable customers. If management starts thinking of kids as commodities, they've failed in the mission to support the physical and mental health of this community. When the current EXOS management came to the parents' meeting this summer and said, "We have no plan for getting back to the water unless county guidelines change", it created ill will, especially when we saw our friends swimming and other teams able to work within the county rules while our pool was vacant. Ill will again when many of us have supported SMAC with full dues during the COVID shutdown, in many cases, two to three times the rate of a regular gym member. When the current EXOS management promises to get back to the parents' group with a follow up meeting in two weeks and then does not follow through on that promise, it creates ill will. Communication, keeping promises is paramount to kids and their families. When the current EXOS management does not show pool utilization data, even after multiple requests so that we could all develop an intelligent data driven plan to maximize pool usage for our entire aquatics community, it created ill will. Transparency is important to taxpayers footing the paychecks of this management company. We humbly ask the board to consider a couple ideas tonight. One, regularly asking for an update from the SMAC Advisory Committee at the official board meetings so that all the board members can be up to date on SMAC activities, or perhaps adding a rotation so that different board members can attend the SMAC Advisory Meeting. And second, if any new contract arises, please create a special section for the swim team with more autonomy for our wonderful coaches. They are invested in our kids. They know the kids the best. We trust their input on the future of this team. Thank you.
Thank you. John Pimentel?
Thank you, President Schwartz. I wanted to make a comment following up on my letter of September third to the Board of Trustees proposing a call for emergency action to consider tuition free community college resolution that I also submitted along with that letter. We also learned at our last meeting the incredible impact and beneficial impact of the Promise Scholars Program. And I would like to encourage the board to agendize a discussion in the near future on the subject of tuition free community college, specifically how to responsibly fund a doubling of the Promise Scholars Program from two thousand to four thousand eligible students. Second, to establish a rapid retraining program for service industry workers displaced by COVID who could be retrained and re-employed in other, hopefully higher valued fields. And lastly, to expanding the eligibility criteria for financial aid to encompass more working families so that more students, especially those from first generation college families and under resourced communities can utilize the community college in order to improve their earning potential and improve their lives. Thank you. I hope that the the board will find it within their sense of priorities to try and agendize an item to discuss these ideas and try and figure out a fiscally responsible manner in which we could adopt programs like the ones I've called for in my September third letter and draft resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not see any other hands raised at this time. So I'm going to move, oh, here we go. Melissa Mason?
Hello, um, thank you for the opportunity to speak to the board this evening. I wanted to second the Bulldog Swim Club comments. My daughter has swam with them for the last few years and is on the pre team. The the club has made no real effort to accommodate the advanced pre team kids to get them back in the pool. They don't require a coach in the water with them and they are just as much of an athlete as any of the other swimmers on the team. They are part of that family that was spoken about and they do deserve the opportunity to be in the water as well. Most of these kids in the advanced pre team should have been moved up to bronze right when the pandemic started and they should be given the opportunity to at least try out for that opportunity at the very least. I appreciate your position and all the, all that the board has done to get our team back in the water. I'm very cognizant of our situation, but I would please petition to push EXOS to please get these kids back in the water. It really would help with their mental health and their physical well being. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Andrea? She's muted. Can, are we unmuted, Andrea? Yes, we hear you.
Hi. I teach dance at the SMCCD at Canada. And I have a few concerns. One of my classes was canceled before the semester started and I was sent an email saying that my class size would be monitored and I would be notified after classes would begin, but it was again canceled before that. I wanted to bring that up. I also found that SM, that the SMAC is operating on campus outdoors. And I would like for you all to consider expanding that for our students that are not able to learn online and that dance and other physical classes are difficult to translate into the two D. Three D face to face classes are more beneficial for these students. I've had a number of my students say, I can't really see what you're doing from my videos or from Zoom classes because I have a laptop and I do have to stand ten to fifteen feet away. I cannot assess their progress while I'm in class. I have to have them submit videos. I also have to make these videos which take countless hours and I am of course not compensated for these additional hours where I have to translate my content to virtual content. I would also like to request that I have some access to my teaching space, at least to record some of these videos in a space that has a mirror because it would be a grand help. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on non agenda items this evening? I'm going to take a chance and move to new business. Twenty dash ten to a approval of personnel items, changes in assignment, compensation, placement, leave, staff allocations. Thank you. And a second please. Thank you. Director David Fun is here. If there's any questions, are there any public comments? Questions from the board or clarifications? Hearing none, I'm at a call for the vote. All in favor, aye, aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Consent agenda. Twenty dash ten six CA, acceptance of grant funds from the National Science Foundation, improving undergraduate STEM education. Grant for data path, creating a dated driven pathway to STEM. Twenty dash ten seven CA, acceptance of gifts and donations by the district. Soccer and baseball scoreboards donated by International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. Twenty dash ten HCA, acceptance of San Mateo County Childcare Relief Grant Funds for Skyline College Child Development Center. Twenty dash ten nine CA, acceptance of grant from Peninsula Clean Energy to support Energize College Program at San Mateo County Community College District. Twenty dash ten ten CA, ratification of July and August twenty twenty district warrants. Twenty dash ten eleven CA, ratification of Community College League of California and California Community College Athletic Association twenty twenty one membership dues. Twenty dash ten twelve CA, adoption of the twenty twenty one twenty two academic calendar. Twenty dash ten thirteen CA, approval of curricular additions, deletions and modifications out of college, colleges San Mateo and Skyline College. And twenty dash ten fourteen CA, approval of correction to board report number nineteen six six CA, approval of contract award for athletic sports uniforms purchased for colleges San Mateo. Do any, any board members want to remove any of these particular items and take it without one vote? Great. I need a motion. Thank you. And a second please. Thank you. I had Tracy Halber on that. Any questions or clarifications from board members? A call for the vote. Are we ready? All in favor, aye, aye. Motion passes. Thank you. We are now at twenty dash ten three C, comparative staffing analysis of the San Mateo Athletic Club by Harvey M. Rose Associates. Chancellor Claire is going to introduce a report and a representative from Harvey Rose will make the presentation.
Thank you, President Schwartz, and good evening once again, everyone. I wanted, I'll be brief. This is in response to a direct direction from the board. I believe it was at the June twenty fourth meeting. And I know this is something that you've asked for as a board a few times, and so we're happy to present this report. We found a firm that actually has quite a bit of experience working with government agencies, Harvey M. Rose. And they were wonderful to work with. We had a really good working relationship. We responded immediately to information requests from Harvey M. Rose. Our staff worked directly with their staff. And at this point, I think I'd like to turn it over to, I believe, Fred Brussell, if I pronounce your last name correctly, Fred, so that you and your associates can present the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor Claire, and good evening, President Schwartz and members of the Board of Trustees. I'm Fred Broussault. I was the principal in charge for this analysis for the district. And just briefly, what we did is compared cost and revenues from the current arrangement with the contractor, EXOS, who operates SMAC for the district. And we compared their positions with those district classifications that best matched them to come up with an analysis of the comparative costs and revenues associated with transferring operation of the, of the facility to a district operation. So Lyndon Berry, who the principal analyst on the project, will walk you through a quick summary of the report and then will be available to respond to any questions. I just want to make the point also that what, what this analysis was not, it was a cost comparison. It was not an assessment of the performance of your current contractor. So we simply looked at the numbers, but this does not contain any information about how well the contractor is performing. With that, Lyndon is here. Lyndon Berry, are you ready to speak and share the slides?
I am. I'm going to do it right now. Hopefully it'll pop up soon. All right. Can everybody see my PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Fred and Chancellor Claire for the introduction. I have a couple brief slides here to sort of summarize our full report, which is included in your agenda packet. And then, like Fred said, he and I will be available to answer any questions that you have. So here we go. I'm going to cover very briefly, you know, sort of an introduction to the current sort of profits and losses of the SMAC operation as managed by EXOS and talk a little bit about how Fred and I approached our, like our analytical work. I'm going to talk about some of the position equivalent and estimated compensation, what sort of went into those numbers, how we arrived at some of our conclusions, and then finally I will present the total, sort of the roll up estimated SMAC revenues and expenditures that were, we anticipate would you transition SMAC to a district manage operation? So this is a very high level summary of numbers that you are probably familiar with. This is the fiscal eighteen nineteen actual revenues and expenditures for SMAC. So you, as you see here, the most significant operating revenue that the athletic club has is its member dues. And then that together with other operating revenues is a total of about five point seven million dollars in fiscal eighteen nineteen. The main point to take away from this table here is that as managed by EXOS, the most significant operating expenditure is the contractor's payroll bonus and benefits for its employees. I also included the line item here for the management and incentive fee because that obviously is the compensation that the district pays to access for the management of of SMAC. I also want to highlight sort of down at the very bottom, there's district revenues and district expenses. These are not in as large as the operating revenues, but they do contribute to the overall bottom line of, of SMAC. And this number here, just over a million dollars, was the sort of net operating and district profit that was generated in fiscal eighteen nineteen. With that profit, they SMAC support some college functions, including donations to colleges San Mateo and the Promise Scholars Program. So this is really the basis of the analysis. This is where we started off with our work. And given the extreme, you know, sort of costs associated with personnel and benefits that was the basis of our analysis. For our analysis, in addition to this profit and loss data set that we had, we received and reviewed EXOS job descriptions for current positions that are currently employed by access for the operation of SMAC. We reviewed these positions, reported salary ranges and a March twenty twenty staffing model that took into account the full operating hours of, of the athletic facilities that was prepared by access. In addition, we reviewed existing district job descriptions and salary schedules to sort of, that would help us identify which position we think would be most comparable for the access positions. And we also reviewed collective bargaining agreements with the sort of relative respective labor unions to make sure we fully understood all of the additional costs that the district might incur were these positions to become district employees. So this is a sort of high level summary of our estimates of personnel costs. I will go into each of these sort of in a little bit more detail. And like I said, there's a lot more detail in our full report. So we've, you know, the, found that the most significant cost increases associated with the transition of SMAC to a district operation would be incurred for employee salaries and benefits. A couple of points that I want to make there. The benefit burden for district employees is significantly higher than the benefit burden currently associated with the access positions. Exos payroll, the benefit burden for their payroll is about twenty seven percent. And for district employees, it varies depending on full time versus part time status and also employee classification, but it's around fifty to sixty percent. So it's a significant cost increase, not just for salaries, but also for associated benefit costs. Another point that I want to make is that there were multiple positions that are currently employed by access for which the closest matching district classification isn't really, you know, isn't really a one to one relationship. I'm talking about things like fitness floor staff or membership representatives where we found something that we thought was close, but obviously there's, you know, the district doesn't have a job description for these, all of these exact, exact positions. And so we sort of highlight some of those. And so we sort of highlight some of those instances in, in our report, and I'm happy to talk more about those. So in those instances, we would recommend, were the district to actually consider transitioning SMAC to an in-house operation, that the district sort of explore more appropriate classifications for some of these positions. So after we reviewed the Exos staffing model and job descriptions, we came up with sort of three broad categories of employees that they employ for the management of SMAC. I'm going to talk about each one of them. The first is the managerial employees. These are the sort of aquatics manager, the fitness manager, the other employees who do the sort of administrative oversight of, of SMAC. We estimate the compensation costs for those employees to be, you know, just under or just over $1 million, depending on the step that the employee is hired up. And that also includes the benefits burden for the managerial employees. The, we call regular employees, and the coaches and instructors are by far the largest cost. Regular employees are employees that we consider to be either hourly or just regular, full to part-time staff who are not coaches or instructors. So this includes everybody from membership representatives to lifeguards, to fitness floor staff, and housekeeping, and courtesy desk staff. And the regular employee personnel costs, we estimated, were between $2.5 and $3 million, inclusive of the benefit burden. There's a couple of points that I want to make about this, especially for the regular employees. One of the largest areas of cost increases was for housekeeping or custodial staff. When you take into consideration the salary that Exos pays its housekeeping staff, as well as the sort of overall benefit burden of 27%, and you compare that to the district's established salary costs for its custodial positions, and the almost 60% benefit burden that the district has for its custodial staff, it ends up costing almost double. So one, you know, housekeeping staff as employed by Exos compared to one custodian position employed by the district is nearly twice as expensive. And finally, we come to the coaches and instructors classification categorization. These are currently in Exos. These are the swim coaches, these are the personal trainers, the Pilates instructors, the general exercise instructors who give, you know, spin classes and everything like that. And the, the district obviously doesn't have anything that's really, you know, even remotely equivalent to these types of positions, who are sort of, you know, many of them are hourly exercise instructors. And so for these ones, the closest thing that we could come up with were sort of faculty positions, were adjunct faculty. And again, sort of like the housekeeping staff, this is almost twice as expensive if you were to sort of, you know, for the hourly rate for an adjunct faculty compared to, compared to a, you know, Pilates instructor employed by Exos. Plus, there's the additional benefit burden. So overall, we calculated an estimated compensation cost of 5.5 to 7.5 million for salaries and benefits were the entirety of Exos sort of positions to be, you know, moved in-house as district employees. This is the final summary of our, of our estimated revenues and expenditures were SMAC to become a district enterprise. I'll walk you through, through these lines, and again, there's more detail provided in the exhibits in our report. So the first column here is the eighteen nineteen actuals, this I just included for comparative purposes. And then the two right-hand columns are our estimate were these, were SMAC to become a district-run enterprise. The shaded blue cells indicate areas where there were, where we anticipate additional or changes in costs, excuse me, changes in revenues or expenditures. And for everything that's not blue, we just applied a 3%, you know, overall COLA to sort of bring the eighteen nineteen actuals up to the present. So obviously, here you have a significant increase in payroll, bonus, and benefits. That's the area of largest increase. That's the first sort of shaded blue line there. Right below it is the management and incentive fee. These are the sort of, you know, management incentive fees that are sort of paid out to Exos to compensate it for its management. Obviously, were the, were SMAC to become a district-run operation, they would no longer be paying Exos these fees. And the final line here is other operating expenses, not a huge increase here, but we do anticipate additional increases for sort of ongoing software, because as part of the current structure, Exos provides some of the sort of overall gym fitness, just, you know, club management software that the district would need to procure were it to no longer have the relationship with Exos. Going down to on the district expense side, this is another line item that I want to call to your attention, is the district overhead. According to the district staff that we spoke to, the district applies a 30% overhead rate of payroll, salaries and benefits to account for overhead charges like accounting, HR functions, payroll, everything like that. So that 1.6 to 2.3 million dollars you see is just 30% of the estimated salaries and benefits. That's in the very top line, the shaded blue cell. The one thing I do want to note is that the, that we did not receive the sort of full detailed documentation of everything that formally is included in that 30%. So it may be that some of the administrative salaries and benefits that are included in the line above, the $500,000, may be offset a little bit by some of the overhead. When we asked district staff, they stated that, in their opinion, there would not be any sort of double counting or overlap of cost increases, but because we were not able to sort of review the full 30% overhead documentation, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Overall, we did not feel that it would, you know, make a material difference either way in the sort of conclusion of this analysis, which, as you can see down in the net operating and district lines down here, depending on the sort of range you're looking at, the increases in payroll and overhead costs sort of outweigh the reductions in expenditures from the management and incentive fee, and would cause SMAC to run at a loss of 2.3 to $5 million annually. This is just sort of a summary of our conclusions. Based on our analysis, the reductions in expenditures are not sufficient to offset the increases in expenditures that the district would incur for running SMAC with district employees. This is, again, assuming that existing district classifications are used. And these increases in expenditures are primarily due to the established salary schedules and benefits rates for its current classifications. However, like I said, the district could reduce some of these costs by creating new job classifications for SMAC positions and potentially negotiating lower rates with labor union organizations. The most sort of fruitful area, I would say, here are the, the coaching and exercise instructor positions. This analysis assumes that they would be hired as adjunct faculty, but if the district were to create new position classifications for sort of exercise or fitness instructors, and those positions were paid at a lower rate, then the district would incur lower costs. The district would also, like I mentioned, incur overhead charges to pay for human resources, payroll, and other functions, as well as expenses for software expenditures. These are considered ongoing expenses. And there's also one-time transition costs that we sort of mentioned briefly in our report. We anticipate that this transition would take probably a year or more to sort of, you know, start from the beginning, look at, consider or explore creating new additional district classifications, get into discussions with the labor union, sort of set up all of the administrative work that needs to be done in advance of the transition. And in addition, there would probably be one-time purchase costs for fitness management software. So overall, we conclude that in order to maintain, like, the potentiality of ongoing SMAC profitability, the district would need to do some combination of creating new positions and hiring them at lower salary ranges, successful outcomes with labor union negotiations, and potentially, you know, increases in membership dues or other strategies to increase revenue to sort of offset the increase in expenditures that the district would incur for, for payroll, basically. So that is the, oh, I'm so sorry. Whoops. There we go. So that is the conclusion of our report. Fred and I are happy to answer any questions that you have about this presentation or about the full text of our, of our report.
Thank you very much. I'm sure there's questions or comments. Okay. Chancellor, you want to say something?
Yeah, President Schwartz, just one other point, and I, and, you know, there'd be different delivery models. And, you know, I don't want to jump in front of the conversation, but just keep in mind that if we were to run this, for instance, as a non-credit institute, institution, or somehow brought into credit-based, our marginal revenues actually would be zero. So unless you run this as an enterprise operation, those revenues would actually be at a zero amount, and the loss would even be greater. I just caught that as Lyndon was going through, and it just, the light bulb just went off. So it would have to be run as an enterprise operation, or that $5 million in revenue would be gone.
Okay. Now, we want to open up questions or comments from board members. Who would like to go first? Justie Holliver?
Sure. I have a few questions. First of all, thank you very much for the presentation. Going through it, you started to address one of my questions, and perhaps this is better directed to our staff. This overhead of 30% seems, I have to say, I don't understand it. So I don't know if you're the right folks to answer that, or whether our staff should answer it, but what I'm hearing is that we pay our employees a salary. We pay them benefits, which you estimate on average to be 50 or 60% of the salary. And then on top of that, an additional 30% of that 150 or 160% is what it actually costs for us to employ someone. Can somebody explain that to me, please?
Kathy Blackwood, thank you.
Thank you. 30% is our federally approved indirect cost rate. That is the rate, and it's 30% of personnel. It could be 25% of the entire budget, but the way the federal government usually does it is a percentage of your personnel costs. And that covers payroll, accounts payable, purchasing, accounts receivable. It covers HR, which in this case is significant, legal, insurance. You know, you keep going, all of that, things that you kind of think of are overhead that are not necessarily billed directly to any program. And it's the amount that we would charge to any federal grant, for instance. The state grants often don't allow us the full amount. They're kind of more difficult, but that is the, you know, we go through a, a process to get it approved by the federal government, and so that's the rate that we gave them.
So if this was a federally funded program, we could charge the federal government an additional 30% over our wage and benefit costs? That's what you're telling me?
Yes.
What is the actual cost? Let's forget about the fact that this is not a federally funded program, so we wouldn't be seeking reimbursement from a third party. What is the actual cost above and beyond the wage and benefit costs that is a real cost that we would be out? It can't possibly be 30%.
It actually is. We came up with a 30% by going through our books and coming up with actual costs. It's been audited. We had to do it that way. And so, yes, that is the cost of, you know, insurance, you know, insurance keeps going up, legal, you know, it's just all those sorts of things. It really, that really is the cost, and that's what has been done. You know, that's, that's how we derived it. We didn't just pick 30% out of the blue.
So when we get our budgets and, you know, so forth, we're generally told that wage and benefits is about 80% of our general fund, right? And everything else is 20%. So if wage and benefits are 80%, and then you're tacking 30% on top of that, 30% of 80% is 24%. So where, where does everything else get paid? You're already over 100% budget.
Not, okay. When you have an isolated program, which a federal grant would be and SMAC is, it's its own unit, there are costs that, as I say, purchasing payroll, HR, that have salaries and benefits in them. So you're, we're not counting them twice, but we're covering that portion, our payroll, our HR will have to add at least one, if not two, people to manage the turnover in SMAC. They've got about 150 employees, and they turn over about 80% of them a year. So that's a pretty big payroll staff and HR staff that we would need to, to cover those number of employees. It's those kinds of things. So it isn't, oh, 30% on top of all of our staff. No, it includes a portion of our staff, all of the overhead side of our staff.
Well, I'm skeptical about these numbers, because, you know, you're saying to, to cover pay and benefits for a payroll, let's say the low estimate here, five and a half million, 5.471 million, is, is an additional cost of 1.6 million to us. That's just very hard for me to, you know, it doesn't pass the straight face test for me. I have other questions. One has to do with the...
If I could interrupt for a second, trustee Holliver, on your, on your overhead point, I think there's a different way of looking at it that might be instructive in this, if I can ask the question.
Go ahead, sure.
Which is, so in the analysis, if the district was to operate the facility, you've added that 30% overhead charge on. However, when we look at the operations currently with an external operator, we're not applying that 30% overhead charge, yet those same functions are getting done. So it seems to me that there's something off in adding that 30% cost, because if we're replacing the personnel and you're absorbing those personnel with the higher personnel cost for the district, and then, you know, presumably they would do the same thing of, you know, doing the HR or whatever is getting done somehow currently by their people. So it seems like if we're replacing those people, to then charge another 30% on top of it is, is not sensible, because we're essentially already absorbing those costs when you replace the existing operator personnel with our own personnel. So that, that's where I'm having a hard time understanding that that's 30%. I understand there's some additional overhead costs of things that the existing operators providing, like the software system and so forth, that we would have to pay for, but I'm not understanding why there's sort of two overhead charges being applied here.
So the legal, the payroll, the accounting, all of those sorts of things, the insurance, all of those are covered out of Exos's management fee. They are not covered by staff that are in the list that we said would be district employees now. The, the ones that we said that the employee cost is only those that are directly 100% of the time serving the SMAC employees. And so it includes, you know, a couple of managers, you know, that kind of thing, the group fitness manager, so on, but doesn't include an attorney, it doesn't include insurance, it doesn't include payroll or, or accounting. They, they have, that comes out of their management fee.
So I think there's just a question here about their management fee is probably going to be less than if we bring that in-house, but we're talking about, about a half million, right? 510 or 520,000 versus 1.6 to as much as 2.2 million seems, there's something that doesn't seem to connect. It's just my review of it as a, as an elected trustee. I did have a question about the line item administrative salaries and benefits, and again, perhaps someone could explain what those are currently and what those would be in, if we went in-house. It's a half million dollars district expense, 518,000 currently, and a little more if it was in-house.
Yes, happy to. So this is based on information that district staff provided to us. Our understanding is that this amount covers mostly portions of salaries associated with current district employees sort of contributing to the overall management of SMAC. So it includes a little bit of, of Tom Bauer's time of administrative assistant time. It also includes a little bit of like financial and accounting time and pool maintenance for a custodian and a maintenance engineer who perform pool maintenance.
Thank you. So if we brought this in-house, it would seem to me that some of the items you mentioned, not, not all, but some of them, in effect, it's kind of our eyes and ears supervising Exos, but we don't have to... But we don't have to have the same kind of eyes and ears supervising a managerial person or persons that would be running it for us. So wouldn't some of those costs go away?
That was sort of our impression as well, but because we didn't have the sort of full list of all of the functions that were covered by the thirty percent cost. And when we asked district staff whether there would be any overlap, they said that there would not. We left it as it was currently with a third or three percent quota. But that's sort of why I wanted to call it out in the presentation and we also noted in our report that there is a potentiality that some of those administrative costs would decrease or be already covered by the overhead charge that we added.
Okay, thank you. And then you, you did talk about the coaches and I'm just curious if in your conversations with our staff, whether anyone advised you that at least one trustee, me, on multiple occasions has publicly said that I do not believe that these are certificated employee jobs. They're classified jobs because they are not providing for credit coursework or things like counseling for our four credit students. Were you informed that that's a, you know, controversy, at least with me as one trustee?
Not specifically with you, but it was something that, that came up. Like I said, we were sort of constrained by the use of the existing district classification positions. Like you said, there's no real equivalent, I'm sorry, not to put words in your mouth. But we, from in our perspective, there's no real equivalent that exists in the current district, like, you know, roster of all different types of employees. That would be really appropriate for somebody who does, you know, swim coaching or who does hourly, you know, exercise instruction. So we went with the adjunct faculty, but that is something that we note in our report is we really believe that were this to become a district run operation, you would need to create more appropriate classifications to reflect that.
Okay, well, I, I just think that this is a, a big cost. And, you know, we, we have pretty clearly delineated what is a certificated work and what is classified work and what bargaining units they fall under. And I don't, I don't think that this is certificated personnel work. So that, in my opinion, is fairly inflated number. If this was done by classified employees, I mean, my assumption is we pay people better, they'd have better benefits than they get with Exos. But the degree of that, I think, is inflated because of the assumption that these are certificated positions. And then I, just a couple of other questions. Did you factor in the student employees? And, you know, what part of payroll that, that is for the current operation and for a possible in-house operation?
We consider student employees at the beginning as sort of, you know, a potential option for staffing, for example, the courtesy desk. Those employees can form, student employees can perform sort of basic receptionist duties. But the district staff reported that they thought that that would be more appropriately carried out by, by sort of like office administrative level staff, I believe is what we ended up using. There's also a constraint that sort of student employees are restricted in the number of hours that they're allowed to work every week. And ultimately, it seems like a better model to just sort of assume that they would not be student employees in that case.
So, thank you. Question for our staff. Don't we currently have student employees that, quite a few that work for Exos?
We do. They're not student employees, though. They're Exos employees, so they're not limited in the amount of hours they can work. I would say about over forty percent of our employees are students. They mostly are lifeguards and they are at our courtesy desk, but again, they're not limited to the, I think it's twenty hours a week that, that our, our student employees are allowed to work.
Okay, thank you. And then just one last question. You, you just briefly touch on this at, at the end that, you know, one option is to increase revenues by looking at the current membership dues. Did you look into that more closely? Look at, you know, where we fit within the, with our competition?
No, we did not consider that as part of our analysis, but you know, it's a reasonable thing to think of if you are looking to increase revenues. But we didn't sort of do any sort of benchmarking or comparison of that sort.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions or comments from board members? Trustee Mandelkeren?
Unmute myself here. So first, thank you very much for a very thorough analysis. And I know you, you did this fairly quickly, so applause and congratulations to you for pulling this all together. Appreciate this very much. It's very helpful. I think it goes sort of beyond through what to me is the key questions you're looking at. I kind of break down what you've done into four buckets. And I'll just recap kind of my mental thought process looking at these. So one is the managerial employees, you know, who actually are the Exos employees who are full-time there at the club. The others kind of what we call the, I think in your regular employee bucket, who are the people at the front desks and the lifeguards and, you know, the custodial people and so forth. Then we have the, the coaches and instructors. And then the fourth bucket is the kind of the infrastructure costs, like the software and the other items that go into that. And I guess when we look at potentially taking this in-house, it would also include the one-time transition costs. So, so working backwards, I mean, I think there is definitely some, you know, one-time cost and infrastructure cost that we'd have to absorb. That's a, a question mark to me and I'm not sure that you actually, you know, enumerated specifically how much that would be, but we know that would be some cost. I, trustee Holliver raised the same concern I, I had regarding the coaches and instructors issue, which is those are, to me, clearly not faculty positions. So I think, you know, counting that as faculty salary is, is not appropriate. Likewise, in the regular employees, I think that's a separate discussion that we've had at various times of whether, for example, do we outsource custodial to a, you know, a, a firm such as Exos does to a subcontractor? Or do we bring that in-house and use our district employees to do that? Likewise, with the front desk positions and so forth, should those be bargaining unit positions and the like? To me, that, that's a separate discussion. And that's a fairly simple calculation because we look at obviously the higher cost of doing that with district employees. And that is then covered by either increasing revenues, i.e. the dues or reducing the net contribution from the operation to the rest of the college. But that's, that's a sort of separate and straightforward calculation that, that, you know, we can do. To me, the, the cloudier part of this, and we're always really hoping for somewhat greater clarity, and perhaps you can provide this greater clarity, is on the managerial side of it. Which is what are the managerial positions that have skills in things like marketing and signing up new members, you know, running an aquatics program, running a fitness program, those things that we do not have the managerial expertise in in-house. And those are the positions that we would have to hire if, and staff if we were to run this program in-house. And so what those particular costs would be, and I believe your analysis was that was somewhere in the nine hundred and ten thousand to one point one five five million dollar range. And then I'm trying to figure out exactly how much of that is offset by salary that's already built into the existing Exo salary model and the management and a performance bonus fee of five hundred and something thousand dollars a year. So the five hundred thousand dollar management fee is very clear. What's not clear to me is how much of those salaries for those people are in the administrative salary line under the Exos model and what that amount is. Because to me, that's the core of this discussion is if you add the five hundred thousand dollar management and performance bonus plus that salary number, if that's greater than nine hundred and ten thousand to one point one five five million, then that looks like bringing it in-house is the same or lower cost. If that number is lower than nine hundred and ten thousand dollars, then it looks like replacing those employees with their own employees would cost us more money. And depending on how much that is, perhaps we can make that up through modest increases in revenue or modest reductions in contribution. But, you know, without knowing that number, it's very hard to actually come to the key conclusion that we're trying to reach in this discussion. So perhaps you can comment specifically on that, you know, managerial employee number. You've laid out very clearly what it would be if the district took it on, but it's unclear to me how much we're paying for that today between administrative salaries and the management and performance bonus.
Yeah, I'll do the best I can. It's, it's a tricky question. So the nine hundred to one million-ish number that we have in there is just for the managerial positions that Exos reported it currently has. So I'm scrolling to the exhibit now so I get it right. It includes a general manager, the aquatics manager and an assistant aquatics manager, a fitness manager and an assistant fitness manager, group exercise manager, courtesy desk manager. And then there are two classifications that currently are not staffed in the current Exos model that do exist in their sort of like, you know, range of job descriptions. And that includes the membership manager and the benefit and the business manager. But those positions, we sort of projected out zero dollars in cost because Exos reported that currently staff in the business office and the membership office report up directly to the general manager. So the nine hundred to one point one-ish million dollars is, that we estimate for the district is only for expenditures for those equivalent classifications. And when you compare that to the Exos, the current staffing of like Exos and what they report that they pay their employees, you know, the district does incur like significantly higher cost.
Well, but, but I like kind of the specific numbers. So if you take those positions that you listed, and that is exactly the list that I think we're talking about of those managerial positions, what is the current salary number for those positions that's buried in the Exos salary number? And then add to it the management and performance bonus number. That, that's really, I think, the apples to apples comparison that we're trying to make here.
I can, if you give me one second, I think I, so I don't have a nice table for you, but I can look into my, into my analysis.
And just one thing to add to that is the, the management fee, there's sort of two pieces to it. So the, the management fee itself is three hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars in fiscal year nineteen. And then there's an incentive fee as well. Right, that's, right, okay. So that comes to the total of the, over five hundred thousand. The, the management fee piece to me, I think, is exactly what you're talking about, you know, to add back to the management salaries can give you the full picture then of, of what the costs of management are. The incentive fee maybe isn't the, you know, the same classification because that's-
Well, I will agree if we were just trying to compare management fee, you know, management cost to management cost, you are correct. However, what we're actually trying to compare is the cost benefit analysis of bringing it in-house versus paying someone else to do it. In which case, including the performance bonus is appropriate to include in that because that is cash flowing out the door to the-
I think it's extremely appropriate to include in that then, and that, that's a cost that would go away. So when you're talking about the cost and benefit. So and if Lyndon has that number in a minute, we can-
It's a rough number. So based on, this is an estimate that I did just now, sort of based on what Exos reported as current expenditures on these positions. And then I added in a twenty-seven percent sort of pay benefit burden. And when you add all that together, this is excluding the membership manager and the business manager, it comes to six hundred and forty-four dollars, four hundred and eighty-nine.
Okay. And Lyndon, just to clarify, is that, because they have a range of salaries too, is that?
This is not the range. This is sort of the actual spend that was-
Yeah, yeah, okay.
March twenty twenty analysis.
Okay, so it'd be that plus the approximately five hundred thousand, five hundred and eight thousand. So that gets us up to one point one million approximately.
Yes. So it's, quickly doing the math seemed to come out to be about one, one, five, four, which is almost exactly the high end of the range that you calculated for the district managerial employee salary, which is one, one, five, five.
Right.
That's right. Thank you.
Other questions from the board members? Comments? We have some questions on the, oh, Richard, did you want to say something?
Well, I, I don't have any questions. I guess I have some comments and some of this will overlap into one of the other agenda items further down in the agenda, but you know, I think this is a very good starting point. I do think trustee Mandelkeren and I have, you know, brought forward a few questions that need to, to be really evaluated to, to get closer to, you know, what the, what the final real cost would be of one hundred percent conversion. Because I, I do think that these numbers are high, okay? And, and so I'm not sure what the next steps might be if the board has any interest in going forward or, you know, exploring this, maybe not going forward today, but exploring this. But I would continue to have an interest in it. And, you know, the, the other question here, and it'll be a question I'll be asking when we get into the next item. Is, is there anything in, you know, a hybrid system possibility? In other words, this is an all or nothing change. And it's good to have these numbers and I think they need some more work because I do think that they're high. But, you know, the, the other option is, is there a possibility of something that keeps some level of external management and some level of external staffing in place, but not the full entire operation being done externally? And I think that's an option the board may want to consider. And it's certainly something I would be asking when we get to that next item. Is that an option that was presented to prospective management firms?
Trustee Holiber, can I just make one quick comment on that? We did at one point consider the fitness instructors and Pilates teachers and so forth. We attempted to assess what it would, what the impact would be of turning those into, say, community service instructors. Something that the district could do. But we concluded that probably would not work now, particularly given the changes in state law pertaining to, you know, gig workers. So AB five and the, and the recent legislation passed by the governor in September puts a lid on the use of those kind of positions as contractors. But that was our original idea, sort of a hybrid for those kind of positions that didn't fit into the existing district classifications. Our ultimate conclusion was at this time, it doesn't look like a possibility. Gym and fitness club instructors have not, were not included in the exemptions that were adopted by the governor to the, to the new state laws. But I think that's an evolving topic and, you know, not everything has been resolved pertaining to the changes in the law. So anyway, that would be an option, I think, to look at with some unresolved questions still at this point.
Vice President Norris?
I, I, I thank you for the report, Ben. I, I hear the questions that my colleagues are raising. But I, I think that the report basically shows, for the most part, even if we were to look at the numbers, that we probably would not be able to run this enterprise at, at the same or better rate and that there's been so much discussion about, well, you know, the district, why is, why is, where is the community college district getting into enterprises, you know, we should be teaching. But we do have enterprises. I'm good with that because I think enterprises are good. But I don't think this is our type of business that we should be running. This is a, this is a type of a business where there are professionals that do run this and we have contracted out two people that are doing this. And I don't feel comfortable going into the business of running a health club as far as that goes. And that's what we would be doing. And at that point, we're also, as a school district, competing with other people that are running like businesses out there. And I don't know really how that, how that fits into the big picture as well. I don't even know if there's tax consequences when we get into areas where we're conducting business with, with other private entities and, and, and charging like fees in, in a, in a competitive area like that. I, I just don't feel comfortable us going in the direction of running and managing a health club. I'm comfortable with subcontracting to others or offering contracts to others that are more qualified to do that work and, and we should stay within the realm of work that we- more qualified to do that work, and and we should stay within the realm of work that we do. That's just philosophically how I feel about this.
Thank you. Chancellor Claire?
I'll let trustee.
Thank you, Chancellor Claire. I just, I had a follow up question for Lyndon, which is you mentioned on the for managerial employee list that EXO's gave you that they currently had two positions that were unstaffed. One was the membership coordinator or membership manager, and the other was the business manager. Did you get any insight into, was that just a temporary issue or was that just, they felt those positions were no longer necessary? And then if, when you did the calculation for the the district expense, did you include those two positions in that, you know, nine hundred and ten to one point one five five million number? Were those two positions included or were they excluded from that?
I'll take the second question first. They were not included. What we basically tried to do was replicate as closely as we could, like what was currently happening. You know, based on the March twenty twenty, which is also like pre COVID and all this other stuff. The first question you asked is, so the membership manager and the business manager, I inquired to EXO's about it because I didn't see those positions on there, like existing on the sort of staffing model they had, but I had the job descriptions for them. And so what I heard from EXO's, not to put words in their mouth, was that those that they they currently are not present in the management structure of EXO's. I don't know whether it's because those positions are just vacant and they're trying to hire them. But that, we were told that the sort of the membership positions and the business positions report directly up to the general manager position. So I don't know if it's temporary or not.
Okay, thank you. And then just to to comment briefly on on trustee Norris and your comments is whether whether we decide it's it's practical or impractical or whatever to do this, I think this is actually very helpful information. Because as we get into the, you know, subsequent agenda items about, you know, what, you know, if we do a contract for another vendor, knowing what the actual costs are involved in running this is very helpful to know, to know whether we, you know, the taxpayers of the county and the district are getting a good deal or not in terms of, in terms of what contract we enter into with an operator and what other people propose. Because I think we have a pretty good feel for what needs to get done and and, you know, what level of satisfaction people have with what's going on. And knowing what that costs and what it would cost us to replicate ourselves, I think is very helpful in evaluating what other vendors potentially can bring to the party.
Through the chair, I would completely concur with that, and I'm happy that we had this report because it's important information. First half to be able to evaluate the whole picture. And so I also appreciate the work that was done. And I think that it was valuable. Helps me also make my, help me with my thinking of whether or not it's something that I think we should be doing or not, but I think it was valuable information. I concur.
Okay. The board.
So I actually agree. I think it's a healthy conversation. And again, I want to thank, I I want to thank both Lyndon and Fred for your work and 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 I thought it was thorough work. You know, for me, we could, we could arm wrestle over some of this stuff, whether it's thirty percent or ten percent overhead rate. We could arm wrestle over, you know, whether it's faculty or non faculty. I I just want the board, when you look at these these numbers in the aggregate, still, even if you were to make some adjustments, it's a big change. It's a big delta. And I wrote to you in my weekly update that the the presentation of this is always confusing. The bottom line is the direct revenues minus the direct expenses is about one point three million dollars. And that one point three million dollars covers some fun one backfill positions, covers promised scholars, covers equipment reserve, but is generating basically one point three million clear and free and clear. So even if we adjust and even if we were at a break even, we're still one point three million behind. So again, I I just want you to think of these numbers in aggregate. And I'm not advocating one way or another. It's your decision to make. The only other thing that I would, if we were to continue to explore this model, I I really think you have two choices. One is it it stays as an enterprise type of model, which allows you to then charge fees that you can recoup and hopefully you 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 recoup those fees. The only other, and I have Dr. Marino on the line, I don't want to put her on 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 this on sort of on the spot here, but you know, she had, I believe, some experience at City College of Santa Barbara with non credit instruction and community based instruction, and I would not recommend we take that path. Because again, your marginal revenue for us as a community supported district, if I'm not mistaken, would get to zero. We'd actually have to create another classification of faculty, and that would also, I think, create some real problems for us. So I really think that you're, you you have to also think about the the model. If you were to bring this in house completely. Trust you, Hall, where I appreciate your comment too, that it may not be an either or, it it, you know, there could be some hybrid possibilities. And I I think that's, that bears some exploration. So there, I've said my piece.
We have some quick, a couple of questions in the question thing here, so maybe I'll throw them out. I think Kathy Blackwood had to excuse herself for a few minutes, so if it's a, might be something that somebody else needs to answer. I will not, I will not do the anonymous since we don't do that. Juanita, she doesn't have a question, but she has a statement regarding students. Students are only limited while the semester is in session. The school is in recess and summer students can work full time. So that is a statement, and the rest are anonymous. So I'm not going to put those out for public at this time. Anything else anybody else would like to say? From my perspective, we we have, I I appreciate the work that has gone into this. And I know that there's been a lot of our staff time working with your your company. And I think that, you know, I heard from both sides, it was very cooperative and which is, it's very pleasing. I think it's good to have these kind of numbers so that you know, we know more or less what we're doing. And it, and I kind of agree with what trustee Haller said, it might be a starting point where it's something that is based on to look at that maybe we can keep going and see if we could work in some hybrid things. That would be my suggestion. Take it for one more meeting or so. But anyway, it's appreciated, and this is an information item only at this point. So I think we received a lot of information on this item, and we think if we're ready, we might move on if we're all agreed. Thank you. Okay.
Did we ask for public comments or public input?
There weren't any hands raised, and I did do, I acknowledged all the questions except the ones that were anonymous. Well, here we go. Spoke too soon. Sam?
I I just have a quick question. So I'm just really confused. So does that mean that the students that are working right now at SMAC, the the forty percent that Tom Bauer said, are they students or are they just hired by EXO, so they're not considered students?
Tom, you can answer that, but I think there are students that are.
They're our students employed by EXO's, just like students that work for Pacific Dining. They may be our students, but they're employees of that company. They're not subject to the same student employee rules that our student employees who are working for.
Oh, I see. Okay, so so they're like, they're 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 not working as student employees of of CSM. They're working as employees of EXO's. That's the difference, right? Okay, all right. That's it. Okay, thank you.
They get the opportunity because they are our students. Okay. I think, anything else? Can we move forward? And I think trustee Mendelker, and you wanted to talk, bring up now twenty dash, oops. One oh six B?
Thank you, yes.
Okay, so this is approval of the contract award for Canyota College Building Twenty Two Swing Space Project. So we need a motion and a second to have a discussion, please.
Move approval.
Thank you. Thank you. And Jose Nunes, our vice chancellor, is here if we have questions. Now I would take any public comments. So we're back on that agenda. Okay, and we'll go for board questions and comments. I'll start with you, trustee Mendelker.
Thank you. Yeah, well, the reason I asked to have this moved up before we get into the next item is because I thought this was a very well done example of how a bid process is conducted and then how the results are presented to the board for approval. So I want to commend Vice Chancellor Nunes and your staff, Chris Strugar Fritsch, if I'm pronouncing your name correctly. Chris, I I know, I know who you are. It's just always hard to pronounce your last name, but thank you very much for preparing this. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things where I thought this was well done. One is, you know, it's always a concern, I believe, to this board that we have adequate responses to our bids and requests for proposals. And in this case, I see that there were ten general contractors that attended the pre approval conference call and the job walk or virtual job walk in this case, and then out of that, six vendors bid on the actual project. And then, as this was presented to the board and along with the bids, we had very clear and concise summary in this case of what the total bid amount was, so the financials that we will be approving and the and the financial obligation of the district was very clearly spelled out here. So as a board member, this is exactly what I like to see, is that we've done a very thorough job by having a fair amount of competition. We hopefully ensure that we're getting the the best value for the district and the taxpayers of San Mateo County, and that this is presented in a way that's very logical and makes a very clear presentation to the boards that we can make an informed decision and vote to approve. So again, commendations to Vice Chancellor Nunes and your staff for doing a great job on this. And I'm, you know, happy to vote in favor of your recommendation here for this contract. So that that was why I asked to have this moved up first.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this topic by Jose Nunes?
Yeah, I just want to say that this is not an RFP best value project. This is a hard bid, lowest bidder competition. And albeit, yes, we do have a pre qualification process that's in place, and so we vet all of the people that are gonna hard bid on this project. But I just want to be clear, this is not a best value, this is a low bid project. And thank you for your comments, sir, trustee Mendelker. And I have to give credit to Yanelli Palito. That's the lady. She puts all this contract stuff together. You can give kudos to me and kudos to Chris, but it's really Yanelli that put all of this stuff together.
Give kudos to Yanelli then as well, who has been a pleasure working with you on these projects. And I think you do a very diligent job, and this is, I think, a very good example of, you know, doing a very good, very nice job on this presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And thank you, Vice Chancellor Nunes, for saying that, because that was going to be my comment, that this is an RFP. And I was going to put it on Yanelli to kind of explain the difference, if need be, that that's a whole different process and expectation. But we, I appreciate you doing that, reading my mind. Any other comments or questions on, we are at one oh six B, twenty dash ten, one oh six B. We have a motion and a second on the floor. So are we ready to take a vote? All in favor, aye, aye. Motion passes unanimously. Now we will go back to twenty dash ten, one oh three B. Approval of contract award for operation of the San Mateo Athletic Club in partnership with the district. We need a motion and a second for approval, for discussion. Thank you. Vice President Norris has has put the motion on the floor for discussion. Do I hear a second? I will second that. Oh, Jade, was that you? No. Okay, so it's on the floor, and Chancellor Claire will introduce the report. And Naiyeli, you would like to be here for your presentation.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much, President Schwartz. And I know that we've had a lot of discussion about San Mateo Athletic Club, the operation of it. And so we recognize that this is a, an item of of importance to the board and certainly to the public because the public does use this facility when we are not using it for college purposes. And what I I really want to yield most of the time to Yanelli because she was the mastermind that put the RFP process together, and and I've asked her to describe the process that was used for this. And it was different than a hard bid. So thank you, Vice Chancellor Nunes, for putting that out. I think what I want to stress to to the board is that I feel strongly that when we do things, we do things by the book, we do things correctly. And I knew, particularly with this one, there are a lot of interested parties. And I knew that it was really important that we absolutely follow our procurement rules, our established procurement rules, our board policies, our administrative policies and our our RFP procedures in this. Part of this, and it, and and I hate to use analogies because it usually backfires on me, but it is a very similar to a hiring process in that we put together, for lack of a better term, a screening committee, or in this case, an RFP committee. And we're very careful about the people that we put on the committee. It was really important to all of us, myself, Vice Chancellor Bauer, and really to the executive team, to ask people to serve on this committee that are truly at arms length to the San Mateo Athletic Club. And Yanelli's going to talk about them in a second, but I just want to share with you who those folks are. We asked Joe Morello, who is a longtime dean of kinesiology and athletics at Skyline College. And Skyline, as you know, does not have an athletic club at all. It's important to get that voice. It was important to get a dean who has a lot of experience in terms of scheduling classes and running a division similar, exactly the same actually, as as the the program at College of San Mateo to have a voice in this process. And Joe has substantial experience with Skyline College in that capacity. He actually was at Cal for a while and worked for UC Berkeley. And then he was also a college Marin and actually had a somewhat of a similar experience very long ago as a dean ran a joint use facility. So I was really pleased to have Joe on that team. We also asked Michelle Radowski, because it was important to get a facilities perspective. We really wanted a really a three hundred and sixty degree perspective on this. And Michelle is again a person that is going to speak her mind, is not going to be is is going to, you know, tell us what we need to know and and really was able to evaluate the facilities aspect of of this extraordinarily well. And then finally, you may not know her, we don't let her out of the office much, but we also asked Ludmilla Pricecar. I don't know if I've said her last name correctly. Ludmilla is the chief business officer at College of San Mateo. She's a certified public accountant. She understands numbers extraordinarily well. We needed someone to look at the business or the financial aspect of this this contract. But more significantly, in addition to her experience at CSM, she is again facilities, Jose Nunes trained, because for a long time she worked in the facilities department and had analyzed contracts that are much more complex or bids that are much more complex than even we're talking about here. And then finally, of course, Vice Chancellor Bauer, who has has, you know, has the administrator in charge of this program. It's also important for you to recognize that as we went through the process, I was not involved as chancellor at all. I didn't know who the final selection was until this week, just a couple of days before you, I think. And secondly, that the scoring, and Yanelli's going to talk about this a bit, was done independently. So each person came up with their own scoring without any sort of discussion, much like a hiring process until the committee came together and put all the scores together. So I just want to, I wanted you to to hear from me directly that we picked the experts that we know in the district to use their expertise to look at this contract from, or not contract, but this, these proposals from a variety of perspectives. We rely on our staff to provide us with their opinions. And I know for me, as a longtime college president and now as a chancellor, when I rely on processes, they generally work out. And so I want to thank those folks that were involved, and now I'll turn it over to Yanelli, who's going to walk us through the process, because I know there's a lot of questions about what the process was and what our next steps might be. Thank you.
Okay, Naiyeli, it's all yours. Are you ready?
Yes, thank you. I just want to make sure that, and I apologize that my, I guess I have a glare right now with my lighting here. I look red. All right, so let's get started. Okay, can everybody see my screen?
Yeah, it's good. It's good.
Okay. So thank you very much, Chancellor Claire, for introducing the board report for tonight. I apologize for that glitch. Okay. So good evening, President Schwartz, members of the board trustees, colleagues and community members. I'm Yanelli Palito. I'm the interim director of General Services. And I'm here to present an overview of the San Mateo Athletic Club operations procurement process. So this slide here is for the purpose of just giving a very brief overview of the RFP process. You know, our district has established internal guidelines to provide a uniform process for the issuance as well as the evaluation and the selection of competitive proposals for services and/or goods. Our request for proposal procurement process, again, it's not a formal competitive bidding process. It's a best business practice to use a competitive selection process. So the key word here is we're selecting a vendor. Respondents submit qualifications, a technical proposal and price, and award is based on best value. We look to see which is the proposal that's most advantageous to the district in consideration of all the factors as well as price. But again, price is just not the winning factor here. Additionally, an RFP is used when negotiations are desired and when vendors are expected to provide innovative ideas or a solution, particularly for complex projects. So our best practice is to use a formal process where we require sealed proposals to be submitted on a specified date and time. So from the beginning, we identify the scope, the requirements and the timeline. We identify potential vendors. We develop the RFP documents and identify who is going to serve on the RFP selection committee. That entails the planning process. Then once we get into the solicitation and evaluation phase, we advertise and issue the RFP. And then we communicate with our potential vendors in terms of clarifying the documents, addressing requests for information. Once proposals are submitted, we evaluate them. And then we enter into the post-procurement phase. That's when we come forward to the Board of Trustees for approval of the contract award. And then if needed, we negotiate a contract, and then we move forward to contract execution and then management. So as we had previously presented before to our board members that served on our ad hoc committee, President Schwartz and Tristie Mandelker, we also did provide an informational report to the, as part of one of our board meetings, to provide the opportunity for the rest of the board members as well as the public to review the scope and requirements on a very high level basis. So here you see the opportunity statement that we came up with, and it's basically just a summary of the scope of work, which was used in the RFP. We then also did identify goals and objectives. So these were the items that we used to develop our RFP. I'm not going to go over them. You can see it's a very extensive list. But you can see, you know, from the beginning here that, you know, first of all, we developed an RFP in accordance with the board's core values and principles, as well as an affirmation and commitment to social and economic justice. We were looking to provide, you know, to maintain the accessibility and affordability of the facility for all of its users. Particularly, we were looking to make sure that we were ensuring the coordination and collaboration with the current operation, because it does have, it's a multi-use facility, and it's heavily embedded with our academic program. And then again, the other requirements, you know, making sure that who we selected was experienced, was qualified. We did ask about the hybrid staffing model. And then we also make sure that whoever we do select maintains current with industry practices and trends. There's an emphasis in customer service. And then also making sure that there's long-term sustainability and vitality of the SMAC facilities. The RFP also did denote what the evaluation criteria was. And so here you can see that there were 10 items. We requested a cover letter with a description of services, qualifications and experience, operations, programs and services, software and technology, marketing, administrative fees, staffing, risk management, safety, quality and completeness of the proposal, as well as requesting to ask if they were a small, local or other business enterprise. So the evaluation criteria were developed as part of an extension of the RFP's opportunity statement, as well as the goals and objectives. And so these were directly aligned with the results and expectations that we sought to obtain in the proposals that vendors submitted. And then these categories were determined based on the question stated in the RFP statement of requirements. And so the criteria did align to those that we typically do request when we solicit for professional services, such as, you know, qualifications, experience, staffing, safety, references and fees. We then also did stipulate what the contractual terms and conditions were going to be. You know, the vendor had to, we gave them a copy of our current contract, and we stipulated the contract term. And so as part of the process, we did request proposers to acknowledge our agreement. And if they did have any red lines, they were submitted with their proposal, because we do take that into consideration as part of the evaluation process. The RFP also did have general terms and conditions as well as the RFP timeline. And the general terms and conditions were in reference to how the RFP process was going to be conducted. So here's a snapshot of the RFP selection process schedule. This was the original schedule that was finalized on July 22, 2020. I do want to make note of a couple of dates that we did have to modify. As scheduled, we did issue the RFP on August 17, 2020. And the schedule did progress as planned, but we did have to make some minor modifications to the dates within the schedule. And this was due to the need to make sure that, you know, we were, you know, providing more time to foster interest in the RFP. So we did issue a third public notice. Typically, we only issue two notices. But in this case, we issued a third public notice to allow more time to garner interest in the RFP. And so with that change, we did have to push out the date of the mandatory pre-proposal conference to September 2, 2020. And so, and so this provided an opportunity for all of those that did show interest, that they would be able to attend this meeting, because it was made mandatory. And the reason for that is that during this meeting, we provide information about the project. And this is the only opportunity for potential proposers to ask questions directly to the district in regards to the project itself, as well as to the RFP process. Thereafter, any types of requests for information would have to be submitted in writing. Lastly, the notice of intent to award was issued on October 19. That was one week later than originally planned, and I'll cover the reason for that later on in my presentation. So for this solicitation and RFP selection committee consisting of district staff was utilized to recommend a contract award to our Board of Trustees. The RFP selection committee consisted of the following district representatives. And so these were the voting members for this procurement. So Tom Bauer, our Vice Chancellor of Auxiliary and Community Services, Joseph Morello, our Skyline College Dean of Kinesiology, Athletics and Dance, Michelle Rudowski, Director of Maintenance and Operations, and Ludmilla Prisakar, College of San Mateo Business Officer. We did have the opportunity to engage a Board of Trustees ad hoc committee. So we dealt with President Karen Schwartz and Board Trustee David Mandelker. And then in terms of procurement oversight, guidance and support throughout this whole process, myself, interim director of General Services, along with support from Maria Kino, our contract specialist. So prior to the issuance of the RFP, the selection committee was selected. And so the purpose for this is to ensure that there's no perception that the selection of the committee members are formed to favor a particular poser. Once they were selected, I sent them out an RFP guidelines, RFP participation guidelines. And so basically with that, they were supposed to review it, because we need to make sure that the selection committee members are prepared to commit the time necessary to participate in the process and that they understand the RFP selection committee participation guidelines. And then most importantly, to make sure that there aren't any conflicts of interest. As Chancellor Claire mentioned before, we do select our committee members to make sure that there is representation of different constituents as well as making sure that, you know, we get the subject matter experts for the various areas that are addressed in the RFP. So in regards to the RFP advertisement and communications process, we did issue a public notice. The public notice was developed, and it included, obviously, the district's name and address, RFP title and the number, and the deadline for submitting proposals, and then the link to where they could obtain the RFP documents. The notice, it also includes details for our mandatory pre-proposal conference. And so then the notice was also electronically mailed to several firms that showed interest in the RFP. I worked with the originating department to generate a list of potential proposers. And then my department took lead to notify them and directly refer them to our district online portal, which is Planet Bids. And so this is the platform that our district uses to publish all types of business opportunities. Then from that point on, any type of official communications are posted via this platform. Just to provide a little bit of background information in regards to Planet Bids. So this was a system that we implemented back in 2016 for our bids. But prior to that, a few years prior to that, we implemented it for our pre-qualification of our general contractors for the construction side of the house. And so this is, you know, they're known, they're an industry leader in regards to the bidding portal business. And so one of the reasons that we decided to use such system is because it does help with our outreach efforts. Not only do community college districts use this system, but a lot of various types of public agencies, everything from cities, counties, CSUs, the UC systems, use this system. And so when we put out an RFP or when we put out a bid, it just isn't necessarily sent to our list of vendors that we maintain. It's also sent out to all those that have registered on Planet Bids. So once the RFP was issued, I was designated the district representative, and I was tasked to handle all communications. So basically, once we issue the RFP, we do enter in what we call a blackout period where proposers are not allowed to communicate with anyone else other than the district representative. And if they do have any requests for information, they're to be submitted via Planet Bids. We held our pre-proposal conference on September 2, 2020. This was a virtual meeting. So prior to that, we did have a total of seven firms who showed interest. And six of those firms did attend the pre-proposal conference. This was held virtually. The pre-proposal conference, excuse me, was mandatory, and it was due to the complexity of this business opportunity. These meetings are held so that we can provide information about the RFP. Then from that point on, the prospective proposers had the opportunity to submit RFIs. And so again, like I mentioned, all RFIs were submitted via Planet Bids. We did receive a total of 13 RFIs, and we did respond to them via a formal addenda, and a total of six addenda were issued. So on September 22, 2020, was when proposals were expected to be submitted, and we received two proposals. The first step in the evaluation process is for the general services representative to review the proposals just to make sure that they're in compliance with the RFP requirements. And this is basically just making sure that they submitted all the bid documents that were required, that they addressed all the different areas of the RFP. Once that was vetted, we sent the proposals to the RFP selection committee for scoring. And so we sent them the proposals along with a copy of the latest version of the RFP. In this case, we did make some minor modifications to the RFP. And as they were issued via addenda, we just wanted to make sure that the RFP, sorry, that the RFP selection committee members had the latest and greatest version of the RFP. Along with that, we did also send them an individual score sheet. The score sheets are developed to reflect the different categories that correspond to the section of the RFP. And it also does include the scoring methodology. The individuals were tasked to review the proposals on their own. And so they used the individual score sheets to record their scores, as well as the pros and cons from their review of the proposals. These individual score sheets were then submitted to the general services department. The scores were tabulated into a master's score sheet. The master scores are generated by taking the average of each of the selection committee members' individual scores. During the evaluation process, the selection committee may consult with other district staff regarding technical or other specialized aspects of the RFP. So in this RFP, we did decide to reach out to our human resources department, as well as our emergency management departments, for their assistance to review certain documentation related to those areas. Once that feedback was submitted directly to me as a district representative, I then provided that information to our RFP selection committee members. At the conclusion of that, we did set up a meeting for the RFP selection committee members to meet. They reviewed the preliminary master scores, as well as the documented pros and cons for each poser. They discussed as a group the evaluations, the proposals, and then they did identify items that needed clarification. So then those clarifications were then sent to me as the general services representative, and they formulated written questions, which I then forwarded on to the proposers. I do want to note that these questions were not to solicit responses that would alter the proposal. The purpose of the questions were to clarify what they had submitted and provide additional information that they may have missed. So virtual interviews were conducted on October 6, 2020. And each poser was provided with an hour to present their proposals and address the set of questions that the RFP selection committee had prepared. The questions were sent to them in advance in order to allow them time to formulate their responses. Additionally, we also did request our proposers to invite their team members that would be managing the operation. That way, there was an opportunity for us to meet directly with those that we would be dealing on, you know, on a day-to-day basis. So the format and the contents of the proposals were prepared, you know, based on what we stipulated in the RFP. Some of the examples of the documentation that we requested were, you know, organizational charts, resumes of key personnel, financial statements, sample documents of, you know, what they would be providing to the members. And so it was just a large list of requested materials that we had included in our RFP. At the conclusion of the interviews, we did decide to enter into a reference checking. And so that was conducted during the week of October 19. So here are the results of the overall scoring process. As you can see by this master evaluation matrix, this does provide a little bit more detail as to what was provided in the board report. This table does show the actual individual scores from each of the respondents. As you can see, that, you know, they're pretty consistent. As you can see that, you know, they're pretty consistent. So to me, you know, this is a good representation that, you know, the the thinking amongst our RFP selection committee members was consistent, you know, as they analyzed and they compared the proposals. The reason why here you could see the individual scores and you, we, we, there is a purpose in maintaining anonymity to who has scored in what manner. And the purpose for that is to make sure that, you know, we're trying to avoid undue influence. And this also does help to ensure that the scoring process is more objective. So at the conclusion of the evaluation and reference checking process, the selection committee had a final debrief to deliberate and finalize their contract award. As you can see, it was in a unanimous decision that Exos proposal was superior to the proposal from Power Wellness. Exos proposal scored 95.8 points out of 110 and Power Wellness's proposal scored 85 points out of the 110 possible points. The board report does provide a summary of the particular areas where the RFP selection committee felt that, not felt, but determines that Exos proposal was determined to be the best value to the district by the selection committee. So here, this table summarizes the fees for each proposal. We did not include the financial consideration as part of our contract award recommendation. As you can see that, you know, as the selection committee looked at the proposals and they were trying to figure out what the fees were, we did do, we did have to request additional information from our just to further clarify, just to make sure that we were understanding what the fee structures were so that we can have or get to as close as possible to an apples-to-apples comparison. So some of the estimated amounts here are based on calculations on from 2019 revenue or our 2019 membership base. As you can see here, there is a variance between the proposals of about $87,000. And so I'm not sure if maybe either Vice Chancellor Bauer or I believe our Chancellor Claire, if you want to provide more information in regards to the slide.
Vice Chancellor Bauer, I think you're probably closer to it. I think the concern was not having a full sense of what the real cost for the Power Wellness proposal would be.
Yeah, we, we had made several requests for information and I think part of the area that was the murkiest and the hardest for us to kind of wrap our heads around was the marketing costs. And, you know, that is, it is a significant part of running any fitness operation. And despite a couple of requests, we, we never really got a full sense of that. In addition, you know, there, there were items here that, you know, is included in Exos's management fee, particularly the payroll processing, which is relatively expensive and, and they do have some additional costs in the technology side that really far exceed what we're paying right now with Exos. But I guess the big question for our group and, and, you know, I'll let other members of the committee, should the board want to hear from them, talk is I think we all just collectively were really struggling with, with this marketing piece and what the impact of that number. And that's why there's a question mark would be there. So even if you assumed it would be exactly the same as Exos's, you know, that would bring it up to, you know, I can't do quick math here, but you know, very close in terms of the proposals, but we couldn't even really figure that out efficiently. And, and one of the other concerns I know that, that our group had is, you know, the way Exos markets, we do very, very, very little in terms of, SMAC does very little in terms of direct mail marketing or anything like that. Again, most of that 82,000 you see there is paid to members who refer other members. So they'll get a dues credit for doing that. And I know that SMAC's membership, which, you know, before, before COVID was over 6,300, more than half of our members were referred by other members. And, you know, with a lower attrition rate, it was really impossible to quantify those costs. So it is something that, that our committee struggled with, with quite a bit. I hope that was enough.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor Bauer. So a notice of intent award was issued to Exos on October 19th, 2020. And this was one week later than we had originally planned. And the reason for this was that, you know, we did need additional time to complete the evaluation process. More specifically, the reference checking process so that the selection committee could complete their due diligence as well as finalize their contract award recommendation. So here we are today with the request for the board to approve our contract award recommendation. Staff is requesting authority to negotiate and enter into a contract so that the contract finalization can proceed. Once that is complete, the staff does plan to bring forth a request for contract ratification at a future board meeting. So that concludes my presentation. Thank you for your attention. I would also like to take an opportunity to thank the RFP selection committee members for their willingness to serve on this procurement and for their time and effort in this process. This can take a lot of time, especially as, you know, many of us are dealing with dual hats, especially during our current COVID-19. And so again, thank you to all of you for participating. And so now I will open it for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Naomi. We're going to go back to the Can you remove that, please?
Sure. Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you. Before, because I think the first thing we'd like to do is ask if there's any public comments. So let's raise your hand one at a time. Frank Elliott.
Hello again. How are we all doing?
Good.
Okay, that was very helpful, you know, like to get all those details and see some cost information, which was not part of what was available online. So, so thank you for that very thorough explanation. I, I, you've answered so many of my concerns and comments and I'm not sure I have quite as much to say as I, I thought I might have, but I do want to make a few points. I, I think it's of slight concern that we had only two bidders and I, I wonder if we can better understand, and I'll let you get a chance to answer when I get done, but better understand why so few people are qualified and interested in bidding on this contract. I know that, that I believe it was Trustee Mandelturn that pushed for the deadline extension was actually actively involved in recruiting more people to bid. So I just think that's an area where the trustees might want to do further investigation. I'd also say that I, I see the scoring matrix and I understand how that works and but for me, a score of 95 versus a score of 85, particularly when one of the bidders is an incumbent, does not seem like a particularly significant difference. And that would lead me to the conclusion that, that perhaps both bidders might be considered acceptable operators. And we could expect perhaps equivalent performance. I do think that going back to the scoring matrix, that some measures seem to be absent. For example, number one, are members satisfied with the club? How was that satisfaction measured? In my 10 years, 10 plus years at the club, I don't recall ever being asked to rate my experience of management. Exos does great in many areas, but not everything. Why is this not part of the scoring matrix? I think there's another area of concern that I have, which is how receptive is the management company to comments by members? My experience unfortunately has been mostly, they're not very receptive. And we've been recently working on the ad hoc advisory committee with Chancellor, Vice Chancellor, sorry, Bauer and also with Diana Thomas. And they've been very generous in providing us time. And maybe we're having an effect on things, but it's been somewhat adversarial and and, you know, we'd like to see improvement in that area. And we think that's a key component of, a key component of this evaluation. I think the third point that I would make is that what is the SMAC employee experience? We'd all hope for high employee satisfaction and low rates of turnover. I just heard in the early report that the turnover is 80% per year. I think satisfaction employees is the right thing for, for the college and it's also important to clubs members' experience. And I, I would say that based on our anecdotal, anecdotal observations at SMAC, employee, employee satisfaction does not seem to be a high priority. Now, with all respect to Tom and the evaluation team, and I, and I get that you guys did your best among staff to find people who were qualified to make the assessment. But I, I question whether those people are truly qualified to evaluate the operator of an athletic facility. None of the people you referenced seem to have direct experience in this type of operations. And so I think that's something to think about. And we know that, that no trustees were involved in the interview process. And we also know that the board did not want SMAC users involved in the interview process. I, I think we missed an opportunity to have a more balanced process, whether those members, added members had voting, voting privileges or not. So that's, that's kind of the gist of it. I mean, I'm happy with Exos in many ways and I wouldn't want to be in your shoes to make a decision. I, I think I might have concerns about the total fairness of the project, or maybe it's not fairness, isn't the right word, but whether we really, really did everything we could to get a comprehensive group of bidders to bid on this project. I do think whoever you decide to select, there's work needs to be done in terms of making an advisory group effective and trying to get the culture to change a little bit so that we are receptive to member input. And we are concerned about the employee satisfaction and retention. So I, I don't envy the choices you have to make, but I, I do think regardless of what happens tonight, we need to work on that advisory committee. So that's my two cents or 50 cents or whatever you want to call it. And thank you for letting me comment. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm Nancy Littlefield.
You needed to unmute me and I needed to unmute me. In the interest of time, I just want to comment a little bit on, it, it looks like there's a clear direction that the selection committee has come up with to advise the board and to seek board approval for moving forward with an extension and an additional contract for Exos. I've also participated on the ad hack group to begin developing and a standing advisory committee for SMAC to, to work with the college staff and all of the, the administration and with, and with the board. You know, I, I have a continuing concern about sort of the culture within the facility. And, and that I think is something that I would like to see addressed with Exos as we go forward. If they're going to be the, the contract provider for the facility. And, and that is a sort of the false choice that's been drawn between whether it's operated in a manner of a private business enterprise or whether it's operated as a public institution. And my understanding in public institutions is that there's a great deal of attention paid to soliciting consumer and stakeholder input in all aspects of decision-making. And that's really not been my experience with this operator. You know, my contrast is working for the Samteo County Health Department for 35 years where there was a great deal of effort into annual evaluations, both by, for consumers and for the people working in the, in the agency to make sure that there was accountability from the top down and the bottom up. And I would like to see that really improve. I don't think, as, as Frank mentioned, in the 10 years that I've been there, I don't think we've seen any either consumer satisfaction survey or employee satisfaction surveys. It's a unique facility. It's, it, as somebody has said, it's a hybrid between a, a private facility and a public one. But I would like to see it shift on its continuum a little bit more towards the accountability you would see in a, in a public government institution. Thanks. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you. Paul Prather.
Hi there. This is Paul Prather. Thank you very much. I do represent Power Wellness, the other bidder. And I'd like to say a few words if that's okay with the board.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Again, my name is Paul Prather. I do represent Power Wellness. I first wanted to thank the board, the district, as well as the administration of the colleges and also the group of, from the community for the chance to learn more about the Samteo Athletic Club. And the opportunity to showcase our expertise in bidding on the management services contract for the RFP. We are really excited about this project. It's a phenomenal facility with great location and great thriving community around it. As a leader of a company that excels in managing only community-facing fitness centers like Power Wellness nationally, I do feel however strongly that the board is finalizing their decision for managing the SMAC with limited information. Specifically after viewing the scoring criteria put forth by the selection committee, I don't necessarily feel that a fair assessment is being made in comparing the two firms. Involving the Power Wellness scoring, despite providing clear expertise with evidence to support in many areas, we were misquoted or provided information that was not included in the scoring process. Additionally, Power Wellness was negatively scored for refusing to disclose proprietary information and IP in answering certain questions. The types of information that the district would already have knowledge of from the incumbent due to their existing relationship. The scoring synopsis listed negatives surrounding the Power Wellness proposal, but did not give great specifics or tangible examples to support the claims. In addition, we were negatively called out for not offering two current client contracts, which is a really irregular and unusual ask. And that's considered proprietary information by our clients themselves. It's their information. We did happily support the district in allowing them to seek the permission to view those contracts from our clients. But as expected, those clients refused the district's requests. So i- in closing, you know, I, I just want to state out, we are a national company. We focus 100% on community fitness centers, just like SMAC. We only had a differential of 10 points in the scoring matrix between our two vendors. And we felt the scoring method utilized, now that we've seen it, really provided little, limited information taken from over 200 pages of the RFP responses. Our management fee price is significantly less than what is charged by the incumbent. We respectfully ask the board to take the time to review and consider the proposals themselves, take fair evaluation of both firms who are both equally exceptional, but ensure that an even evaluation of the offers are made. I do appreciate the time today and I, I do look forward to a response. Thank you.
Thank you. Elaine Palms.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
I, I will try to be brief here as well. I am part of this ad hoc committee. We're primarily master swimmers. I attended the mandatory pre-bid meeting because my, we have a family business that we're contractors. So I'm familiar with the pre-qualification process. It's quite arduous and I do it every year for our company. So I felt that I could attend these meetings and glean some information. I received the addendums. I followed along as far as I was allowed to in the process. I was never a bidder. I made that clear from the beginning. But I was interested and in fact, asked if I could audit the selection process and the bidder interviews. Unfortunately, I was informed this was not possible. I do believe that had I been able to do this, I could have been an advocate for a transparent process as a member of the community. I know that there has not been a precedent for this in the past, but I urge you to consider either allowing a member of the SMAC community to be involved or better yet, a member of the community together with a member of the Board of Trustees, which it looked as though you could have been part of this process from what I saw earlier. I previous, I personally believe that the district is on the right track to making this an even more competitive bid in the future as our world comes back into focus and there is opportunity to recruit other competent vendors. as our world comes back into focus and there is opportunity to recruit other competent vendors. One last note, it may be advisable and further further encourage a wider swath of vendors to look at bidding the management of this facility down the road. If bifurcation or subcontracting of the aquatic management from the gym management could be considered. And the reason I say this is there were five to six other bidders besides myself, because I think I was counted in the seven, but I was not an actual bidder. And I noticed at least one of them in the questioning say that they were they wanted to know if the aquatics could be subcontracted. So I believe, you know, and this is my personal opinion, that there were limited bidders because there were potentially only two companies that could manage both an aquatics facility of this standard along with a gym. And so I think if you could allow for subcontracting of that portion or completely divide them into two contracts, you might get more potential bidders in the future. And that's all I have to say. And thank you so much for all you're doing and for taking all this time with all of us.
Thank you. Sam Chang.
I'm you. Thanks. Thanks once again. I just wanted to impress upon the board and everyone here just really the uniqueness of the facility that you have here. I've been, you know, a member for over seven years and, you know, my kids swim here and they've been part of the program here and I've swum here and use the facilities. And I've been all over the country and over the world. I've lived everywhere. And this really is a jewel in the peninsula. And I really impressed upon you guys to think about, you know, how and what it does for the community at large. I mean, to have a facility like this is quite rare. And to have a a community facility like this is even more rare with the access afforded to everybody if given the chance. And it's it's really a very, very special and unique opportunity for everyone to be able to share and enjoy this. And and I really, really, really hope that that you guys will take that into serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other members from the public would like to speak, so we will now move to discussion amongst board members. Questions, clarifications from board members who would like to be first? Nobody? Trustee Mandelkerns.
Okay, I'll go first. And by the way, there is before maybe before we go to board members, you do have one question. There's one question, the Q and A from the public, maybe we want to address that first before.
Mitch Bailey was going to answer this live. So Mitch, would you like to answer the question live?
I'm sorry, I was trying to actually type the response in there and hit the wrong button, but the answer is no. Can you how it's not included in this RFP process?
Yes, thank you. Yes, it's not included at all. This is only for College of San Mateo. And I'll, Trustee Mandelkern, if you'll hold your thought, we do have one more member of the public.
Jim.
Of Coach Jim, Jim Coach, Coach Jim.
Hello, my name is Jim Stretch, and I was employed at the San Mateo Athletic Club from 2012 through 2019. And while I was there, I coached youth swimming and master swimming and helped manage the pool operation. I I think you guys should know that SMAC has lost a lot of good people over the years. I used to have adult members ask me in in masters practice all the time, why did so and so leave? Why did this person leave? Why did that person leave? And inevitably, it was because we were not being treated like valued employees, especially from the compensation standpoint. So I heard what everyone else said about employee satisfaction. Let me just say that as an employee, my my dissatisfaction grew until the peak where I just had to resign and leave because I was so unhappy. And I, it was very clear I had been paid the minimum amount that they could pay me for all these years. And, you know, if you want people to bid on your contracts and you want good employees to stay to build a good community facility, I don't think Exos is the company you want to go forward with. That's my comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, back to Trustee Mandelkern.
Yeah, thank you. I I'd like to just explore a little bit the the beginning part of the process and how the outreach was done to different vendors, how many vendors there were, how we reached out to them beyond posting on Planet Bid or advertising for three weeks in the newspaper. Because, you know, my concern is, you know, we have a responsibility to make sure we're getting the best opportunity for the public, the community, the taxpayers in San Mateo County, both in terms of the quality of the operation, the service that we provide, as well as the cost to the district. And in general, I have found in my experience, both here at the district and in my, you know, my day jobs in the past and the private sector, that the the more bidders you have and the more responses you have in an RFP, generally, the more good ideas you get and the more competition tends to get you a better value in the final product. So winding up with something that we believe is a excellent facility that should be very attractive in an industry where allegedly, you know, a lot of companies are hungry for work these days. To only wind up with two bidders, to me, was a bit of a surprise, especially when there were, you know, apparently six vendors that were at the pre qualification meeting expressing interest. So I'm wondering, you know, how how much outreach did we do to qualified firms? I know I provided a list of names of firms to Chancellor Claire. I hope those were followed up on, but I'd just like to find out more about that. And then secondarily, getting into this question, which I think has been raised by previously by some members of the public to me privately. And then also, we've heard some of this in this evening as well. You know, were there things that we could do that would have gotten greater participation from bidders or respondents to the RFP in terms of separating the aquatics operation as a separate item or as a subcontractable item? And, you know, were we were we asking for things that were, you know, not necessary for our evaluation, but were perhaps exclusionary to vendors, such as asking for proprietary information or contract or things that may not have been necessary for us to perform the evaluation? So so perhaps you could speak about that a little bit and give some more background on the vendor pool and and, you know, why why we didn't wind up with a larger number of vendors?
Elaine, would you like to address that? Or give it to somebody else, whatever your pleasure is?
Well, I guess I can I can start. So, you know, we we did what we were legally required to do, and so we issued a public notice for this RFP. We issued it for three weeks, three consecutive weeks. We did do some outreach in putting together a list of potential proposals. Those that had shown interest from the previous time that we had put that put out this RFP back in 2009. The notification was also sent to, I believe it's it's Ursa, Tom, if I don't know if you want to correct me with on that. And then, you know, again, like I mentioned, posting it on on Planet Bids. You know, we're doing our best in terms of making sure that our RFP gets noticed. But then, at the same time, it is also a responsibility for vendors to, you know, reach out and put feelers out for construction of for, sorry, for bid opportunities. And, you know, it's 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 a process where both parties engage. You know, we put it out there, we advertise, we do outreach as best as we could with limited resources, I would have to say. You know, we don't have the time to 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 previously do how we would have done outreach in the past. And that's one of the reasons why we implemented Planet Bits. In the case where we do have a unique RFP opportunity, a bid opportunity, you know, we'll reach out to our sister districts to get, you know, vendor listing. But again, because this is a unique operation, from my understanding, there's only a couple of vendors here in the state of California that can provide these services. And so I know I pass it on to Vice Chancellor Bauer. I'm not sure if you want to say anything.
Well, I I go ahead, Chancellor, by Chancellor Bauer.
The only other thing I would add to what Yanelli said is, you know, so trustee Mandelker and the names that you did forward, we did send to all of them. And I I don't believe any any did respond. And and I want to respond to something that was said earlier about why we don't get more. One of the things that is very different about San Mateo Athletic Club is the fact that it shares approximately 60 to 70 sections of academic programming. So you don't have the ability to.
I'm bringing it. Do you have your ID?
Oh, he's muted. Go ahead, Tom. Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. So that is one of the things that 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 we learned the first time around, and again, this time around, is is that level of of integration is very challenging for vendors. And particularly with aquatics and trustee Mandelker, I'll jump to what you had said there. We actually, that decision about not doing them separately was made before we even put the initial RFP out. When when we had the consultant, I guess 11 years ago, working with us, we could never get aquatics by itself to pencil out, given the fact that a vendor wouldn't have complete use, a a complete ability to program that pool. There are significant academic programs and significant team programs that use the pool at the same time. So you don't have, one of the things that I think I had said back 10 or 11 years ago, if I had full use of both of those pools and I didn't have to share it with anybody, that would be a $1 million plus revenue generator by itself. But because we are a shared facility, that is one of the reasons that we've we've never done that. I mean, we made the decision before we put out the initial RFP. And and again, even under Exos's management, the pool is actually still doesn't make money. I mean, the aquatics program actually, you know, it's subsidized by the the general membership. So I did want to answer that question as well.
Well, so if I can just respond, I mean, I just I find that inadequate, frankly, that, you know, basing a list of vendors on who responded to an RFP from 10 or 11 years ago is kind of ridiculous. I mean, I've I've been on both sides of the RFP process as a issuer of RFPs and as a respondent to RFPs. And I think, you know, doing effective outreach is how you get a good pool of bidders. And doing the legal minimum may well in fact be the legal minimum, but it's not how you get a good pool. I mean, expecting, again, in a very specialized area like this, expecting the people who are in this business to be going on Planet Bid and looking for us to post it or reading the local newspaper to see a legal notice of a bid is is not an effective way of reaching out to people. I think likewise, you know, it's it's good that we sent a notice to the the fitness organization, you know, the International Fitness Society, whatever that is. But, you know, honestly, I spent about half an hour on Google coming up for the list of 14 different companies that that appear to be in this business of running, you know, public and private combination facilities and fitness centers. And, you know, we generally, and I don't, again, I don't know exactly how you did the outreach. I know in a previous time, you said basically you were posting information on their website, on the the information link on a company's website. Well, that's not a very good way to get something noticed. I mean, you generally have to reach out to an executive in their sales and marketing team who responds to RFPs if you want to get them to notice this and respond to it. So I just I just find that the outreach that apparently was done here, to me, seems to be inadequate, which may well account for why there was such a small number of bidders, both potential and actual on this project.
Well, again, sending the the RFP out to previous bidders, to those who are local in this market, going to Ursa, using Planet Bits and doing the, and and we actually took the 14 that that you had given us as well. You know, and going on their websites, that was a little bit more involved in that. It was actually sending the RFP via email to the people listed on the websites where they didn't have that opportunity. That's where we just had to do it in general terms. But, you know, I'll defer to Yanelli. Again, I've only done a couple of RFPs in this district. But my understanding going into this is that Planet Bits is the best way to advertise an RFP. But, you know, I'll I'll defer to Yanelli's expertise on that.
You know, anything else you want to say on that?
Yeah, I I don't have anything else to add besides that. You know, we actually, we did show for us in previous RSPs that we've issued as well as as bids for public works, the Canyatta Building 22 project, it was a surprise to us to see the the amount of interest as well as who responded, especially during this time. But it but we're starting to see a change in the market. In previous RFPs that we've issued, we really haven't had that much interest. And and if proposals have been submitted, it's been maybe a couple, three, four. But again, it it just depends on the services that we're putting out. And so every every RFP, every solicitation is unique. And so unfortunately, it's something that is out of our control. You know, we did query the proposers that showed interest, but did not submit. We did receive responses. I I believe we did make mention of that in the board report. But again, you know, I'm I'm still anticipating to to receive responses, we're going to get, because again, at the conclusion of this RFP, we do have a debrief to go back and and see, you know, garner from lessons learned and how we can improve. And then also to reach out to our vendors and and see how we can improve the process.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Norris.
Just out of curiosity, how many potential vendors did we actually reach out to? You said there were 14, and then how many were there from before? And then in the area around here, I mean, what what do you think was the the number of people that actually did receive our information?
Yanelli, do you have that?
Just rough. I don't need the exact number.
I believe we were able to make contact with about 11 firms. And so from those 11, seven showed interest. From the seven, six attended our pre proposal conference, and from the six, two submitted.
No, you said, how many did you, you said you've made contact with 11? That means you you actually had contact with 11, right?
Yes.
How many did you send out to that didn't bother to respond back? So there was no contact?
Um, well, we had a list of about 15. And so from those, you know, it's so, so yes, we did use a list from trustee Mandelkern. We did have to do a little bit more research to get actual contact information if it if it was either email or phone address. But then, when we tried to scour their website, we couldn't, we couldn't find any contact information, an email or a phone number. But the only way to communicate was to actually submit, you know, fill out a form. And that actually did work in a couple of instances. And I actually did get direct calls from even for one of the firms. They did actually call me directly to inquire about the RFP. And so I directed them to to Planet Bits. So roughly, there was about 15, 16 total. From those that we were able to make actual communication was that were 11. And so I hope that addresses the question.
Well, yeah, and then it was also put on the website of the posting entity that that firms look at. Is that correct?
Yes. So so from Planet Bits, one of the beauties from Planet Bits is that when we issue the RFP and a potential vendor is interested in the RFP, and the only seat that they, the only document that they can see publicly is the legal ad or the public notice. If they want to see the rest of the documentation, they actually have to log into the system. And then Planet Bits then adds them to our prospective proposers tab. So then that's how we start to track and monitor the interest of the actual RFP.
That means that the potential vendor has to take some initiative here to initiate the process. And it was published in the paper, the legal number of times, three times?
Yes.
Well, I have a hard time finding fault and and flog with this process and lack of lack of circulation to potential vendors. I don't really know what else we can really do. Because if we're going to do this for every type of job that we do, I mean, where does it end? I think that this was a reasonable, a reasonable attempt to get the word out to as many people as possible that would be interested. And and if they didn't respond, then they didn't respond. And people have also said, we're dealing in a world of COVID at this point. So maybe some people are not interested in taking on new projects. And then, because this is also a very unique type of entity, because you need to. because you need to interface with a school that is also scheduling classes and sections in the facility that I can see also, and which I've heard, is a disincentive to some people. So I, I have a hard time finding that this process was flawed as a result of lack of diligence on the administrative side of it in putting out notice.
Trustee Goodman, I saw your mute was off. Would you like to ask a question or clarification?
Yeah, just, so both Frank and Nancy both brought up some really good points. I mean, for me, it really jumped out that, that there were so few bidders and we've touched on that already. So that's just a concern of mine. But what I also have a concern about is, you know, with SMAC employees not being district employees, I, I have a very real concern, you know, that they are seen as employees of the district because SMAC is seen as an extension of our district. And at the very least, we have to make sure that anyone doing any type of business operation on our campuses have a standard to treat their employees at the very least at the level of our employees. And I think that, for me, that's a, a concern that I'm hearing. That's a concern that I have. I, I know when we were talking early this summer about N95 mask and things like that and making sure that, you know, the SMAC was closed down at the appropriate time. You know, we have standards and we have to make sure that, you know, whoever we do business with hold or hail to that same standard. So as we talk about this process, a lot of those things that we were talking about can be addressed during the negotiation, whether it's standards, whether it's, you know, listening to members and employees. But right now for me, you know, I just don't feel comfortable, you know, especially with some of the information that Paul brought out. I don't feel comfortable moving forward at this time because there's just so many uncertainties, unknowns, as well as the, the credibility in the process for, for me. And that's just, you know, just one trustee. And, you know, I may, may very well be on the wrong side of this down the line. But, you know, I hope that I'm not.
Trustee Oliver, I don't know if you're, you've left the video. Are you with us by phone? I can't tell. He's muted. So. We, I'd really close the, technically close talking to the public, but because we are who we are, I will go back to that. And I'll start with Frank Elliott, but I noticed that Coach Jim, you also had questions in the Q and A. So I'm hoping that you're gonna say those verbally when I get to you. So Frank Elliott?
Thank you, President Claire, for giving me another chance. I, I just want to comment on something that Tom Bauer said. I, I don't, the statement that the gym subsidized the pool, I don't think we have great transparency about that, that comment.
Richard, is everything okay?
Got some back noise here. So.
We have a little trouble with one of our trustees is on and off, sir.
Yeah, I understand.
Zoom, what can I say?
Yeah, no, I understand. So I, I, I think one, some data points to consider are, for example, in my case, I pay something like $90 a month in dues, $30 of which goes towards master swimming. So I think that the way the gym does it, and I don't know, the way it's evaluated, and I don't know for sure. So $60 of my dues are considered supporting the gym and 30 for the pool. The reality is, the reason I'm a member up there is for the master's program, for the swimming. So, and I, my understanding is that probably about 50% of the members that are up there are up there for the pool. And this, being a member of the gym is a nice amenity, but I saw them use it as do many other swimmers saw them use it. So I really think we might benefit from having some better transparency on this and maybe just asking the members at the front desk when they check in. Are you here for the pool? Are you here for the gym? I would tell you that I also have heard that of all the inquiries coming in currently, 100% of those for, are for access to the pool. And unfortunately, we don't have capacity for that. So I just, I would, I would think we could have, it would be nice to have greater, greater transparency on that. And of course, my, my agenda is I want us to, to, to properly give credit to the aquatics program if it so deserves it. End of comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Coach Jim?
Also, thank you for extending the opportunity for public comments. I didn't mention before that I grew the swim team there, the youth swim team, from 24 members to 152 United States Swimming Registered Members. And we moved the club from 108th to 28th. I would like to react to a comment made by Mr. Bauer also, and that is the nature of my questions posted on the Q and A. And that is exactly this. He stated that if he did not have to share the pool with the college programs and teams, that it could be a million dollar facility. As a taxpayer, I'm a little bit offended by that. I don't think it's right that community colleges should raise bond money to build facilities.
She was asking for you.
I know. Saying I'm here.
I don't think that you should build facilities to sell use to the public. It should be for your students. And I, I don't have the, the bond language, but it's offensive. He said he shouldn't have.
While you're up here?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think we, can we get, can we get trustee Oliver on, Mike, Chancellor Claire? Is he's by phone now? Hello?
Hello, trustee Schwartz, or President Schwartz. I have trustee Oliver on my cell phone. So hopefully this will.
Okay.
Hey, trustee Oliver.
Okay, trustee Oliver, you have the floor.
So, yeah, I've been on the, the Zoom via phone for quite a while, but no one knew it. So I've been calling and no one could hear me. Anyway, you know, I'll, I'll just be brief because I think the concerns that I have have been raised by a couple of other trustees. But I, I am concerned about the lack of, you know, kind of competition we, we'd want to see. And, you know, there are issues that have been raised and I'm, I'm not gonna make any judgment on those. But, you know, they, they do raise concerns worth, I think, looking into. My, my, what I would suggest, and I, I guess I could put it in a motion, is that we reject all bids, reopen the process, encourage the, the two, you know, that submitted bids to re, to reapply, no prejudice against either of them. And I just have a hunch that if we do this, it may be opening up other, other interested potential bidders to say, oh, you know, may, maybe I, maybe I've got a shot at this. And I think just that process alone could actually yield a better, a, a better pool from, for us to select from. So I, I would move that we reject the bidders and redo the process.
We already have a motion on the floor that I would have to get rid of first before I could take another one. If I do believe that's correct. But I would like some clarification from Chancellor Claire about what this entails if we reject this bids.
Okay, Richard, hopefully you can hear me okay. And we're not getting feedback on anybody because I've got a phone and a, so certainly, you know, the board can do, he has a couple of options here, of course, and, and rejecting the bid is one of them. And I'll ask Yanelli or perhaps Vice Chancellor Bauer to weigh in. The risk of that is that we have Exos on board with us until December 31st. And if we do not have an operator as of January 1st, we cannot operate the facility. And that impacts not only the members that spoke this evening, but, but, you know, potentially many others. And so that's, that's, that's the risk unless Exos was willing to extend. And I would recommend if you work to extend, you know, if you really want us to do a, a lot of recruiting to get as many video bidders as possible, we're, we're probably looking at a fairly long extension period. And I would leave that to Yanelli and Tom. But that's totally contingent on whether Exos would be willing to extend. If they're not willing to extend, I, I, I would urge the board to think about that option carefully and perhaps direct us to get a little bit more information or maybe even get some clarity around some, some of the contract language to address some of the other concerns that were brought up. So that's, that's my two cents. It's a practical issue. If, if we had, if we had a, a longer period, of course, we could do, we could do this. But we're up against a, a January 1st deadline. That's, that's the issue.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Norris?
I'm concerned with that as well. I, I, I believe that we have to deal with certain things objectively and that we need to follow process. And I don't see that process was not followed here. Administration knows very, very well that this is a very important issue to the board. And I think that from what I've seen, the administration put together a very, very capable and objective team of people to review this for us and to make a recommendation. And I think that the recommendation process and the entire process of vetting went through as it was explained and was, was, was very substantive and, and covered all of the areas basically that I would have thought were important. Now, people have said that, well, you have employee, how, how do employees feel about it? Well, how would, how would evaluators evaluate other vendors as well as to how their employees feel about them? See, it's not really a question you can put there on the table and ask because you can talk about Exos as far as that goes because they are the commodity on site. But how would you evaluate three or five other vendors that were also in the mix on that question of employee satisfaction? You really can't. It's not an issue. So I think that that is something that is a concern for me and I think for all of the members of the board and the, the community at large. And I think that the way we address that, not only employee satisfaction, but member satisfaction, the community members who were there, that gets addressed by the way we write the contract with whoever is the operator. And we create pathways back to us to be able to make sure that they're running the facility in a way that's in the best interest of the community and based upon our standards, which I've heard other trustees say is important to them as well. I think that can be dealt with when we write a contract with whoever is going to be the vet, the, the operator of the pool. And that's where we have our opportunity right now to be able to do that and put it in. We've already taken some of the steps that the community has brought forward. I, I met with Frank and with Lane and others as well on a phone conference. And we talked about the, the institution of an advisory committee. Well, maybe that needs to be beefed up a little bit more and, and, and create other opportunities for, for users to be able to have an opportunity to share their thoughts on the operation. But all those things can be, all those things can be worked into a contract. And I, and I believe that our, our administration, our, our team that went through the process, followed all the steps in a way which, which was a fair process and which gave us a recommendation that I can follow. And I'm willing to go forward with the recommendation. But I also would like to make sure that the contract that is drafted is one that takes into account all of the other things that we've heard tonight that are important to the board and to the community.
Thank you. I will get to trustee Mandelkern in just a moment. First of all, I would like to say thank you to Yanelli very much for all of the efforts that you put into not only going through the process of the RFP, but presenting that to us before and again and again, so that we could hopefully understand what you've been through. I have been very satisfied when we've had construction bids come to us and we've had the same kind of a situation where we felt that we didn't, we questioned, how come we didn't get as many bidders on this as we thought we could? And sometimes it was viable. They agreed to go out and do it again. Sometimes there seemed to be very good legitimate reasons as to why it happened. I really fall into that the times that we're in, that I think that you have done, that you have put through the best, the way you have structured to get vendors to come in. And being a previous contractor myself and my husband, I will tell you, vendors talk and the word gets out. And it's, it's, it's a world where they know what's, what's up. And if they're looking for work, they, they do go upon themselves to find it. So, but I'm confident that you went out and did everything in your power to get what you could. You even talked to them afterwards of asking them why they did not participate. So I have really no problem with that. And I would agree with trust, with Vice President Norris that some of the comments that we're hearing in question of Exos is something that can be put into when it comes to doing a contract. These are, this, that's the next step. The first step is to accept the job that our employees have done that we give them to do, which is to go out and do an RFP, find the contractors, bring them together, and go through a process, a fair process, and come to a conclusion. I'm not comfortable with the fact that I'm really feeling that some of my trusted, my colleagues are not liking, they're not getting the answer they want. So they're questioning things that they couldn't change. And I'm a firm believer in that. So we do have the question on, of, of motion on the floor. I will go back to trustee Mandelkern because I cut him off. And I don't want to do that because I think he might have another question or comment. But we, we need to vote on that and go from there. So trustee Mandelkern?
Very good. Thank you, President Schwartz. So I have two other concerns about the process as well than how this was presented. So one is, this to me was, you know, a, a step backwards in our relationship with the board and the administration in terms of transparency of this process. To me, when we're dealing with a contract of this size, where we're talking about at least probably half a million dollars a year for multiple years, it was going to be a multimillion dollar contract, to get the only financial data to be presented in a PowerPoint slide during your presentation where I'm kind of squinting to try and see the numbers without a real presentation of the financials in this. I personally not in the habit of signing blank checks and handing them to people. And to have this recommendation made with a vendor without any financial analysis and presentation ahead of time to, that we can look at, to me is a step backwards. We've, we've done that in the past and I know this board has approved contracts in the past without financial information. I voted against those contracts because I don't feel it's appropriate for a board to approve a contract without understanding the financial implications of that contract. And I think we all recall that we have managed to get ourselves into trouble in the past when we have approved contracts without understanding the financial terms of that agreement. So that's problem number one. And trustee Schwartz, to your comment about voting on the item that's in front of us right now, I also have some issues with that because what is in the recommendation in the board packet is a bit different than the recommendation Yanelli that you had at the end of your PowerPoint presentation. The recommendation, the board packet, which I believe is what the motion in front of us is to deal with, is to delegate or excuse me, I'll read it directly here, to authorize the chancellor or his designee to negotiate and execute a contract with Exos to operate the San Mateo Athletic Club for a period of three years, beginning January 1st, 2021. Again, I believe this board has the authority to approve contracts before they are signed and should do that. The proposal Yanelli that you had in your presentation was that the contract would be brought back to the board for ratification. My understanding is ratification occurs after a contract or agreement has been signed, not before. And I believe it is, you know, it seems pretty clear from what I'm hearing from my colleagues that this board wants to see what we're agreeing to before it's signed. So I, I don't feel comfortable with the recommendation that we have in front of us. I do recognize the fact that, you know, we do want to continue to serve the community and serve the members of SMAC and not have this facility be locked down on January 1st for lack of an operator. But I also feel that I, you know, I, I respond poorly to being told to negotiate with a, you know, essentially a gun pointed to my head, you must do this or else. That does not feel right to me. So I think if, if we want to move forward with this, perhaps doing a much more limited agreement where we move forward on a one-year contract with Exos, see if we can incorporate these concerns that we, that have been raised and that we have into that procedure. And then we can look at our process. We can see what needs to be done perhaps differently or perhaps everything is working great and we can renew. But, you know, I think we, we really need to move in a much more limited fashion. And I do not feel comfortable voting for the motion in front of us to, to designate our authority as a board, excuse me, to delegate our authorities of board to the chancellor to negotiate and execute a contract for three years without the board being involved further. without the board being involved further in this. So that, that's where I am at the moment. So I think if we're willing to modify the motion in front of us, uh, then perhaps we can proceed forward. But with the motion as it is right now for what's in the, written in the board packet, I can't, I can't get on board with that.
Uh, Nialy, may I ask you, in the process of the RFP, was it presented to the bidders that this is for three years? Is there a timeframe that their, their expectation is for how many years?
Yes. So the contract term was stipulated and the RFP was for a three-year term with a renewal, uh, with the option to renew for two additional one-year period.
So changing the, changing our wording to one year, could this give the opportunity for the bidder to withdraw? Because we're actually approving something that they did not, that they hadn't agreed to from the beginning.
Correct.
So they would have the option to withdraw if they didn't accept the one year. Okey dokey. So.
Well, to be fair, trustee Schwartz, you know, when you enter a negotiation with this contract, they can refuse and walk away at any point as well because we don't have an agreement with them yet. So it could be any other term that they don't agree with that we try and negotiate as well.
Right.
As you know, as we heard from council prior to this enclosed session, that it is within our prerogative to say we want a different term for the contract than what was listed in the board packet. That the county council told us that was legitimate for us to do.
Okay, Coach Jim, I'm not going to let you speak again. We, we, I've got enough public for one night.
trustee Schwartz, can I just get a word in?
You may.
Thank you. Um, as far, I, I can't tell you whether Exos would be interested in renewing for a year, but I do support the, if that's the board's direction to at least get to the point of, of negotiating something and, and renew it for a year and then see where it takes us. Again, I, I can't speak for Exos, but I mean, I can, I can support, I, I would be supportive of that. You know, just because I know that that way it keeps our members, keeps our members here uh, on January 1st. So I mean, I, I think if that is the way you choose to amend the motion, I think that Yanelli and, you know, the chancellor and others will enter into those conversations and bring back an agreement in November, should they be willing to do that? Should they not? Um, I, I don't know where we go from there. But I, I would welcome the opportunity to at least have the conversation.
Vice President Neris, you are the maker of the motion, by the way.
Speaking to trustee Mendel's current suggestion, uh, I, I would support that and I would, I would support that because I think it sends the message that we will go by the process which the administration of the district has followed and honor those people that did their job diligently. But also point out that there are certain things that we would like to see. And if, if it would be something that we can do, a one-year contract followed by options, then that will take it out. When the option period comes up, obviously, we'll know better whether or not we're, we're prepared to extend. Uh, and so I, I would be willing to consider that as well and see if we can do what we need to do to fix this situation all the ways around and to make sure that the things that we believe are important and the community believes are important are addressed here because that's bottom line as far as that goes. Uh, and so I, I, I would, I would probably support that.
Thank you. Just, Jeff Chancellor Claire.
Yeah. Um, and I, I may be just confusing things, but I did want to respond to the concerns expressed, particularly by trustee man, and trustee man, and I know you and I've talked, I've really appreciated the conversations. So I want to tell you as chancellor, um, I, I think it would be good for all of us to do a bit of in-service on what are the procurement rules? Um, because they're, they're, you know, we, we need to make sure that whatever they are, we're following them. I know part of it, they're put in place to really guard against undue influence from anybody. And that's why I think that, you know, it is a, an, an employee sort of internal process. On the matter, the contract, um, I agree wholeheartedly that if it is legal for us to bring a contract back to the board for approval, I, I'm, I fully, I can fully support that. I, I certainly understand the concern and, and if I were, if the roles were reversed, I don't think I'd be wanting to sign a blank check as well. So I hear you loud and clear on that and we will look at our internal procedures. Um, and if, if that is actually allowable, that's a change that we can make and I can fully support that. I understand where you're coming from there. So I just want to acknowledge that. I know I've just confused the motion on the floor, but I, I felt I needed to get that in before you take a final vote.
Trustee Goodman, as you take, you took your muting off.
Yes, um, I just before even going into amending the motion, would it, would there be any need to consult with counsel to see if there's any additional exposure to the district by just amending and saying, hey, we're going with them and, and then giving them a one-year versus what was a part of the RFP process for both sides? And then just to come back and kind of like move the, the goalposts and say, okay, well, we're going with this group here. And then we're giving them one year versus the three years that was a part of the, the RFP process. I know we have council, another council online. So I mean, so.
Are they online?
Yes.
I, I believe that was the specific question that I asked of county council when we were in closed session. And I believe the answer we got back was yes, we can, we can do that. Maybe I misheard, but I've got four colleagues, chancellor Claire, that were sitting there as well.
I think I heard the same thing. I think it's, it's just a matter of changing the time from three to one. Right? And it's, and it's, uh, what about the option for the two, then you wouldn't do the option? I'm going to reread what I think, I think we want to say, and of course the maker and, and myself will have to agree. It's recommended that the board of trustees authorize the chancellor as his designation negotiate and execute a contract with Exos to operate the San Mateo Athletic Club per RFP number eight, six, eight, two, six for a period of one year beginning January 21st, 2021. And that's it. Trustee Mattel Kern, do you agree with me what I just read?
Yes, although I think I heard chancellor Claire say that, you know, be prior to execution, you would bring the contract back to the board.
Yeah, yeah. And, and to.
Want to put that in there and.
Sure, for clarity, I think that doesn't hurt.
I think you need to put into that to negotiate and upon final approval by, and upon approval by the board, execute.
Execute. That, that sounds good.
Okay.
I, I, oh, God, I'm sorry.
Well, I just, trustee mental current, I mean, trustee nurse, you made that motion. So you're amending it to what you were just said?
Well, I'm also interested in hearing my colleagues on the issue of offering additional options at this particular point, or if that's something that we will talk about for negotiating purposes.
You mean the option of the extensions?
Yes, beyond the one year, if we're, if we're satisfied with the progress. I mean, I don't think that in one year we need to go out to bid again and we find out that we're able to negotiate contracts, build in language that deals with the areas of concern involves, involves the, the public in a way which we've talked about with advisory as a way to look at problems with employees and, and members complaints. If we put all those things in there, we're satisfied. I'm not interested perhaps in having to go through a whole RFP again in one year. So if there's some way that we can extend on that basis, then I'd like to save us the problem of doing that.
Okay. So rereading it, oh, we're really do, if I understand correctly, we're only just changing from three years to one year.
Uh, I, I don't know if, uh, vice chancellor Bauer has something to add to that or and it can help us with that.
Uh, what I was going to suggest is, you know, again, along trustee mandel current's recommendation is authorizing a one-year renewal with the option for two additional one-year renewals at the sole discretion of the district. Cause to trustee nurse's point, if everybody's happy and, you know, why would you go through an RFP process again? If they're not, you have the option to just not renew it. Um, and then in overarching, all of our contracts have a 90-day cancellation clause. So I mean, at any point with any contract that this district has, you know, we have the discretion to, to void that contract with 90 days notice. So I, I would think, again, we have, I, I, I don't have a backup plan if, if Exos is not interested in this, but I, I think a one year with the option for two one-year renewals is probably more palatable than one year. But again, I can't speak for them. We would have to have those conversations.
Okay.
Well, clearly we have to have those conversations. Uh, and that's agreeable with me to, you know, to have, if, if the district has the option to renew or not renew for the additional terms. I think the, the other advantage, the one-year term is it gives us an opportunity to dig further into the information report we had this evening from the consultants to examine this issue about whether there's a transition plan possible to the district having a greater role in the operation or not, or whether that makes any sense. So it gives us time to explore that as well. So I, I think this, this one-year plan is, is beneficial for a number of reasons for us moving forward. I can support that.
Chancellor Claire.
So I, I wanted to acknowledge trustee Goodman's concern and question. I did text county council and they should be calling into Mitch Bailey because I have Richard Holliver on my phone. So I didn't want to cut off trustee Holliver. And so Mitch, I don't know if you've heard from John yet or whether he can answer the, the, the original question from trustee Goodman.
That's why we wait. Like, um, so we went as a, a conversation. We went from saying, let's put a pause or not necessarily pause, but let's go back out and see if we can get more bidders.
No.
No.
No, we just said we're, the, um, the motion is, is rec, is recommended that the board of trustees authorize the chancellor or his designation to negotiate and execute a contract with Exos to operate the San Mateo Athletic Club per RFP X eight, two, six for a period of one year beginning January 21 with the option to renew for two additional one-year terms. Renewal will be the sole discretion of the district, providing that service and quality remains excellent. That's a motion that.
Well, I'm going to leave that part under the motion. Because I, I, I think that that's a very difficult thing to put in such a standard. It's just leave it at our discretion and we can decide at that point.
Trustee, uh, President Schwartz?
Yeah.
Trustee Holliver would like to speak.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'll be voting now on this motion. If it were to fail, then I would move that we reject the bidders and rebid this. But I understand there's already a motion on the floor. I would also point out that in the event Exos is not interested in a one-year contract, we do have another qualified bidder. And that would be option two, in my opinion, that we see if they would do a one-year contract if Exos says no. So do you think that option does exist?
Yeah, I would think that would be another conversation.
I, I agree with, if I can comment, I agree with trustee Holliver's comment about having option two. I think there's also the option that we can look at, you know, do we just, we try it ourselves and for an interim period and see how to keep the doors open. But I am concerned about having a gap in service, which is why I would prefer to go with the one-year plan and not just cancel all the responses and go back out for rebid because I think at this point in the year and where we are with the COVID crisis, I, I don't see us being able to get an RFP process done again and get a vendor in place by January 1st. And again, I do think this facility does provide benefit to our students. It provides benefits to our faculty and staff. It provides benefits to the community and I would hate to see it closed down. So that's why I respectfully, you know, disagree with trustee Holliver's position about rejecting all bids. I think going with the one-year option gives us the time that we need to reexamine the process, to reexamine our options, see how things go with the negotiations and the perhaps change in the way that, that things are managed in terms of the employee relationships and the community relationships within the Exos operation and, and gives us the breathing room to, to plan things out in a more orderly manner.
Okay, uh, chancellor Claire.
Right. And I'm, I'm just the messenger here. We did get an opinion from county council and you can amend this. So it's a one year. So I just wanted to confirm that. I just.
Trustee mental credit and I heard the right thing. So.
So did I.
So did you? Okay. Any other comments or questions before I call for the vote on the amended?
Yeah, just to trustee Amanda's point about the process being reviewed, there's no review of the process because we're basically given a one-year contract and then with the option to extend, there is no part of the process that will be reviewed at all. And so I think that's a little bit misleading. So giving the contract for one year with an extension of possibly two years. So this is a three-year contract that we're giving. There is no process review. There is no option to review any transparency issues whatsoever through this process. So just that, that's clear on the record.
I don't want to speak for trustee mental current, but.
I'll speak for trustee Mandel current.
Well, I want to see if I understand it. That's why I wanted to speak for you. Only because if they rejected the one year and we, and we had, they said they don't want to do one year, then we would, uh, you didn't want, you didn't want, you said you might go out. Oh, never mind. Go ahead and speak for yourself. Good thing I'm leaving. I'm getting tired.
Trustee Goodman, uh, you know, I respectfully disagree. I mean, my, my intention and you know, whoever is on this board past this, you know, December will, will be dealing with this and and I would hope that, you know, you and I would be of the same mind. So whichever one of us is, is here going forward is going to approach this in the same way. Is I, I, you know, I, I don't see this as a three-year agreement. I see it as a one-year agreement, but I think the one year gives us the time to do a process right. Cause one thing I've heard continually through this process is, oh, we're kind of in a rush to get this done because of a deadline that we have to meet to get an contract done for an operator by January 1st. So I would propose actually, if we do enter this one-year agreement, we do immediately start looking at the process saying, okay, you know, how did we, how can we get more vendors? Is it possible to redo an RFP process to get more vendors to participate, to take over at the end of the one-year period to see how that goes? And again, in parallel, maybe everything is going great, uh, and, and we stick with where we are. Or maybe we say, you know, it's just, it's time for a change, or we look at the analysis that was done and presented to us by the Harvey Rose people and dig into that a little bit more and say, you know, there's a transition path. We can go down here to say it makes more sense for us to take over the operations of this internally. So I, I think this one year gives us the opportunity to do that review in a very thorough and methodical manner. It's not punting on that whatsoever. It's really creating the opportunity to do that review, which we would lose in, in either option. If we do a three-year extension right now, then clearly that option is off the table. If we say cancel the RFP process, reject all bids, then we're in a scramble to say, what do we do between now and January 1st to try and do something in a rush and a hurry? And that's usually when we don't do our best work, when we're trying to do things in a hurry to meet an artificial deadline. So, so I, I see either of those two options as less desirable than the one-year option. But I think we're in of the same mind in terms of wanting to explore this process and revisit it and make sure that we actually get the procurement process right when we do this. And, and frankly, it's not just for SMAC and this, I think it's looking at our procurement processes in general where we've had issues with other procurements in the past, where we've done things like this, that we really want to make sure that we're getting a process that's transparent, that gets the board the information it needs to make an informed decision and does so with the board having the information it needs to hold itself accountable for the decisions that are made and not just signing blank checks and handing them to the administration.
Exactly. I think that's exactly the point. But the, the fact of the matter is we heard one process that happened today that was strictly qualit, qualit, qualitative. And the other wa, or value-based and the other one was lowest bidder. So when you can pick and choose, you know, to fit your scenario or whatever you want, then that's the reality that we have. So there, I mean, when you talk about process, we got to blow the whole thing up and really deconstruct what, how we do things. And unless we're talking about doing that, we're just, like I said, the, 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 all, and basically in reality, that's all we're doing. We're just punting it.
Well, I, I'm in agreement. I'm in a hundred percent agree with you, trustee Goodman. I'm not in favor of punting. And I, I think you're absolutely right, which is, you know, we, we've clearly got some big process issues that we need to examine. And I don't know if it means blowing the whole thing up, but certainly revisiting this top to bottom is certainly what, in my opinion, what we need to do. I think we have punted the procurement issue down the road for a couple of years now for various reasons. But I think it is time that we do revisit this in the near future and, and look at our processes on procurement.
Okay.
Can I ask the, the chair to please just restate the motion clearly? So then I can amend accordingly.
Okay. It's recommended that the board of trustees authorize a chancellor or his designation negotiate and execute a contract.
No, no. Negotiate. And with the approval of the board execute.
Okay. Negotiate and with approval of the board execute a contract with Exos to operate the San Mateo Athletic Club per RFP number eight, six, eight, two, six for a period of one year beginning January 1st, 2021 with an option to renew for two additional one-year terms. Renewal will be at the sole. Renewal will be at the sole discretion of the district, providing that service and quality.
End, end of story, at the discretion of the district, period.
Discretion of the district.
Period.
Period.
I, I would amend my motion accordingly.
Thank you, and I'd made the second, so I will totally agree with that. So, any other comments before I call for the vote? Um, Mitch, do you want to, you want to do a roll call vote for us, please?
I sure will. President Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice President Nurse?
Hi.
Trustee Goodman?
No.
Trustee Holliver?
No.
Trustee Mandelkern?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam President, you have, you have three votes and the affirmative and two negative.
Okay, so the, uh, mo- motion does pass by majority vote. And we will move on to 20-10-104B, Approval of Institute of Human and Social Development Early Head Start Childcare Partnership. Need another motion, a second to discuss the resolution?
Move.
Thank you, trustee Goodman. I have a second. Trustee Nurse, thank you. Dr. Jennifer Taylor Mendoza, the vice president of instruction at Skyline College is available if there are any questions. Are there any public comments? Any board comments or questions? How do I know if trustee Holliver has questions? I guess I don't. Hearing none, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor, aye, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes by unanimous vote. 20-10-105B, Approval of Construction Consultants. Need a motion and a second to pass this resolution?
So moved.
Second for discussion.
Yes, a ho- it's for discussion, you're right. A second to discuss the resolution. Jose Nunez, Vice Chancellor of Facilities, is available if there's any questions. Are there any public comments? Trustee Goodman, you had a question?
Yes, uh, Vice Chancellor Nunez, um, my question is regarding, uh, something we discussed in the past as we talk about these issues with regards to equity and, um, access by minority vendors. Um, can you talk, uh, to that process in this case?
Sure, absolutely. And so we have two separate processes. We have one for general contractors and subcontractors, which we're in the process of doing right now, which by the way, we've done extensive outreach to a myriad of, uh, minority-owned veterans, women-owned organizations, uh, Asian companies and stuff in San Francisco, Oakland and, uh, uh, San Jose, uh, and that's in process right now. You'll receive a full report of that in, uh, January timeframe. Yanelli Palito and her team, uh, as well as my folks are, are working on that. In terms of the architecture and engineering selection process, we have an open process where we do not go out and, and solicit, uh, uh, from any type of, uh, uh, minority-owned women, uh, uh, veterans-type organization. It's just a year-long, open process that anyone can go submit their application to, uh, the district. We look at their finances, their safety records, uh, references and things of that nature, and they're added to our architecture and engineering uh, uh, selection process. So again, we did not put out an RFP or an RFQ or anything. It's just an annual opt-in type basis.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, trustee Goodman. Any other questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes by unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Uh, 20-10-107B, Approval of Suspension of Board Policy 8.74 Exemptions and Waivers of Fees. A motion and a second to discuss?
So moved.
Thank you. Did I have a second? Second, thank you. Dr. Erin McVie, Vice Chancellor of Educational Service and Planning, is available to answer any questions, any public comments? Board, questions or comments? Oh, I think you're off the hook there. I'll call for the vote. All in favor, aye, aye? Motion passes by unanimous vote. 20-108B, Approval of Revision to Board Policies 101 District Mission, 3.35 Payroll Deductions for Certificated Personnel, 4.35 Payroll Deductions for Classified Personnel, 6.01 Philosophy and Purpose, and 6.45 Field Trips and Exclusions. Call for a motion and a second?
So moved.
Somebody, second?
So moved.
Thank you. Uh, Mitch Bailey and Erin McVie are available for any questions. Are there any public comments? Any board comments or questions? Hearing none, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor, aye?
Excuse me?
Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Mandelkern, I missed you.
Sorry, I was trying to unmute myself here. Um, I, I suggest we take these one at a time, like we normally do, for these individually. Some are more involved than others.
I have to go get mine. Okidoki. Okay, you have to wait a minute till I find it.
I just, I'll, I'll go ahead and start with the first one, which is the mission statement on 1.01. I'm just concerned that, you know, this is, this is a mission statement. We have other statements of, you know, in our strategic plan of our vision, mission, values and so forth. I'm just concerned that we have several different non-identical statements out there. And I would just like to see if this is an opportunity where we can bring things into sync across various documents. And I'm not sure that just bringing this document, this one forward by itself at this point is the best way to do this. And I'm wondering if there's a particular time pressure on this one, or if this, if this item could be brought back in the context of our other board statements, strategic plan, documents and, and other things, so that we, that we get these all in sync.
Uh, sure, trustee Mandelkern, there is particular time pressure. Uh, the DPGC, the District Disciplinary Governance Council, we annually review the mission statement of the district as part of our regular process. And so, um, if desired, we can bring back a comprehensive review of all related statements um, um, for the board, uh, if that's what's preferred.
Okay, so maybe we, you want to pull this one, um, when we get down to voting 1.01 and bring it back at a later time, trustee Mandelkern?
Uh, I, I would prefer that if it's possible to do that. I don't know, uh, Vice Chancellor McVeigh, I'm sorry, I had a hard time hearing you. I couldn't tell whether you said, yes, we, we did have the opportunity to bring it back, or no, we did not have the opportunity.
Yeah, he, I'm sorry, he, he acknowledged that it could be brought back separately. Is that agreeable to the other board members?
Yes.
Yes, trustee Goodman? And trustee Holliver, wherever you are. Okay, so yeah, now you want to go, so that one we will not put into our motion. Now you want to go to 3.35 payroll deductions? Why am I not finding these? Okay. Oh, okay. So the change seems to be down on, uh, oh, five, the numbering was changed. And six dues. Elimination of words, the Collective Bargaining Unit, represented by the American Federation of Teachers, AFG.
Madam President, if I might, um, the, this, the, the changes to this policy and the, and the one following uh, are just cleanup language to conform with the Janus decision and taking out the agency dues.
Okay, got it. Is that acceptable? Everybody understands that one? Okay. And then we go to 4.35 payroll deductions. You said that's the same thing by the Janus ruling. Okay, any questions or comments on that one? Okay, so I'll move to 6.01 Philosophy and Purpose. Are you want any, Mitch, you want any explanation on that? That just seems like some verbiage change?
I'll defer to Vice Chancellor McVeigh on that.
Um, yes, there, there's just some, there was some cleanup of the language used in there. Um, trustee Mandelkern, to your point, the, the philosophy and purpose is associated with the mission as well as, you know, other statements like value statements that the board has made. Um, and so, um, I, I leave it up to the, the preference of the board, whether or not, uh, to take this one or to bring it back in, in tandem with the mission. Um, eith- either way, can remember.
I, I did flag what we know is missing in this, in this, um, statement. Uh, in item four, the different kinds of education that we offer, it doesn't, uh, reflect in there anywhere that we do offer a four-year bachelor's degree program now.
And so what does that mean?
I suggest that we, uh, take this one out too and have it relooked at and, and brought back.
Okay.
And we can reflect and, and make sure that we have that change, um, that was noted.
Okay, very good. And last but not least, 6.45 Field Trips and Exclusions.
We simply updated, uh, the, the language relating to rules and regulations. They are board policies.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, which will have to be amended to exclude, uh, Board Policy 101 and 6.01. Is that agreeable to the motion maker in the second?
Yes.
Okay, I don't even know who seconded. Maurice, I'm going to give you the privilege to do that. Okay, so we'll take those out and now we'll call for the vote. All in favor, aye, aye? Motion passes by unanimous vote. Very good.
The remaining two will be brought back at a future date.
Future date, yes.
Good.
Communications, the board, along with the governing bodies of the other public agencies, school districts and independent special districts and the county, received notice from the San Mateo Civil Grand Judy to respond to a recently released report regarding ransomware. It is not enough to think, to think you are protected. They have asked that all governing bodies respond by January 5th, 2021. Staff will review and report. They report and prepare a draft response for the board's consideration at our December meeting. You guys already have something going, good. Okay, statements from board members. Are there statements from board members? I'm going to, Jade, where are you? Because you're in the Bahamas. Are you, you still up?
I'm still up. No reports.
No report after all. Well, thank you for hanging in there with us. Uh, trustee Mandelkern?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I'll try to make this brief. Uh, first item is, uh, I'm very pleased that San Mateo County has moved up to level orange in the, uh, COVID uh, spectrum, color spectrum here, whatever, uh, and that's good news. So hopefully we can stay there and, and things may even improve at some point. But now that we're in level orange, which frees up some restrictions, uh, but not all, I'm hoping that, uh, we can get an update at some point in the not-too-distant future from our administration on what we may be able to now provide in terms of more on-campus student services, uh, whether we can reopen some of our learning facilities, libraries, provide more, uh, support services, uh, opportunities for students to be able to, uh, you know, use the computers on campus and the wifi on campus, for example. Um, provide healthcare services, mental health facilities and the like, as well as, uh, does this give us the opportunity to offer more, uh, hard-to-convert or hands-on learning classes uh, for the winter semester, uh, that we had not been able to offer previously. So I think, given the change in situation, perhaps there are some changes of what we may be able to provide to our students and getting an update on that, perhaps at our next board meeting would be appreciated. Uh, secondly, I would like to congratulate Vice Chancellor Nunez on his facilities leadership award from the California Community Colleges Facilities Coalition, well-deserved honor. Uh, you've, you've been a pillar of excellence here at the district for many years in terms of our facilities and maintenance and construction, uh, projects, so well-deserved honor. And then lastly, I just note that I was able to attend, along with my colleagues, the Kenyatta College President's Luncheon, which was a virtual affair this year. Um, I, I know, did raise, uh, some, some of money, which was good for the, uh, innovation fund at Kenyatta College, so great. And I think the, uh, numbers were down somewhat and it's certainly not as much fun to do it via Zoom meeting than to have everybody together to break bread together and, and have good, but I, a good time. But I did appreciate the student presentations were, as always, uh, very well-done and, uh, inspiring and reminds me of, you know, why we're all here doing this is to help make our students successful. And when you hear the stories of what they've been able to accomplish with the opportunities that we provide, it is heartwarming and fulfilling and inspiring to us as well and keeps us all going through these long meetings. So thank you, President Moore, for organizing a very good president's luncheon again, once again, this year in very difficult times.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Nurse?
Thank you. I have nothing to report tonight.
Okay, trustee Goodman?
Uh, yes. Just wanted to remind us, you know, we went through this whole meeting, um, without saying Black Lives Matter, anti-blackness, or having our standing item on the agenda for race, class, gender inequity. Um, with that said, um, let us not forget, you know, as, as, you know, we know every time you turn on the TV, there's something else in the cause to say, um, that black lives matter. Um, however, I'd like to bring attention to October being Filipino-American History Month. Um, Filipino-American History Month is celebrated in the United States during the month of October, which was chosen to celebrate, um, and commemorate the arrival of the first Filipinos who landed in what is now Morro Bay, California, on October 18th, 1587. And so I'd just like to have that be my comment for the night and just make sure that we don't forget.
Thank you. Um, trustee Holliver, I don't know if you're with us. If not, good night. Um, I just want to say before we close that, um, I'm getting close to, to not being with you at every meeting. And I don't want tonight to go without saying how much I admire the staff that we have, that the work that goes into, the work that they do. I am very proud of all of you. I'm very confident when I get reports that, uh, they're handled very correctly. And I appreciate more than anything your ability to take criticism from the board, because I sit here sometimes thinking it's unwarranted. Uh, but you, you take it in stride and you go with it and you make improvements. And it's all for making the district better. So, um, I thank you all for being such, such great employees. And, uh, on that happy note, I'm going to wish, bid you adieu. I should be back next month, but you never, I mean, next meeting, but you don't know for sure because next Tuesday we'll say it all. So our next Zoom meeting is going to be a business meeting on November 18th. And until then, be safe, be healthy, keep your sanity, keep your sense of humor, and, uh, be kind to each other. So, good night.
During the meeting on the two individuals?
Yes, for sure. And Jose, yes, uh, uh, both of, both at Skyline, correct?
Correct. One of my guys.
One of your guys. So, sorry, so sorry to hear that. So, thank you. Thank you for the reminder. Good night.
Stay safe, everyone.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Chris.